Today is Monday, January twenty-three, and we're beginning our work session. First item on our work session is an update regarding our village pool project. Steve Rumpunis, our pool designer, is on the Zoom call to give us an update. Steve, are you there? Can you hear us?
Okay, how's everybody doing? Let's see, so I guess the update would start with the, we received comments back from the Department of Health. There was quite a few number of comments, which thankfully, the majority of them were just information and administrative comments. Along with that, there's a couple of, you know, ones I'd like to discuss with them. And there's a few comments that require us to get, you know, to change some of the items around. There's no comments were drastic, nothing requires any kind of major redesign. There's no increase in cost with any of these comments. Everything seems to be just to kind of clean it up and make it a little nicer for the DOH. So with that, we've requested a meeting with the DOH just to go over the comments. And that meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October thirty-first. It's nine o'clock in the morning, and I'm just going to show up there with the drawings and their comment list and, you know, talk about the ones that we could probably drop off the list and also the ones that, you know, I just have a few questions on. Immediately after that meeting, we'll start, well, we've already started, but we will, I need the meeting to really complete revising the drawings to get back to the DOH. So we will probably, I would say, within one to two weeks, we'll be back at the DOH with a revised set of drawings, with all the comments addressed, and, you know, hopefully that'll lead us to the final review.
All right, I should have said at the outset, trustee David Jamori is out of town, but is online at the Zoom meeting, and Michael Pepperd is otherwise engaged tonight with a previous responsibility. So there are the three of us on site, and David, remember. Okay, so Steve, does the, any of these DOH comments produce anything substantive that we should know about? Or is it all black office stuff?
Yeah, it's all just, you know, technical, some, a lot of questions they had, they're looking for a lot of clarity. So it's, it's nothing of, there's no layout change, there's no design change, nothing, no pool structure change. You know, everything in that respect is fine, including the filtration system, all that was fine. So that there's nothing, nothing really to come back to the village and ask about. We're still proposing the same design with just, just some, you know, some more clarity. You know, they had some technical questions about things like the surge tank, and that was really the biggest one, it was just the surge tank, so we'll be taking care of that. You know, you're welcome to be involved if you'd like.
Just want to know the story, so what would you then predict? You're back in a couple of weeks to DOH with a final review?
Yeah, we'll definitely, you know, I, I have to say, two weeks after, like, after, after January thirty-first, thirty, that's our meeting with them just to go over the comments and some of the questions that I'd like to get answered from them about basically the surge tank. But yeah, give us about two weeks just to wrap everything up after that, and we'll be back to DOH. And usually comments, you know, once, once you're in the queue and you're running, the comments come back faster. You know, the second review.
There is, I mean, the previous review was many months, right?
Yes, it was actually, I think it went in in August, and we got it back, you know, I guess, two weeks ago.
Okay, so, I mean, do you have reason to think that, you know, this last review is a couple of weeks, or is it a couple of months?
No, I would, I would say probably four to six weeks, but it's, you know, if that's not the final review, it's the comments that come back are going to, you know, they get very picky about, you know, wording and things like that, so that could just be the problem that we'll see. And in that case, you know, we're with, it's going to, the whole process between the second review and any other minor pickups that we need to do, I'm sure within two months, we'll, we'll have this permit.
I mean, the, the goal had been to staple this in the corner and get it out to bid. With the thought a contractor on board would begin to order material which we could store in spring and summer, are we still believing that's the case?
Yes, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable enough after this review, and after we fix up the drawings from this, I'm, I'm ready to go out to bid, basically, from that point. That there's not going to be any major changes to the bids, like I said, it's, you know, it's going to be all minor administrative stuff. So I have no, no worry about that. Eric and I have been coordinating, and we're, we're looking forward to a early March bid.
Okay, and was there this further discussion about the discharge and drain the pool?
Yeah, so we're having further conversation with the county on that. We finally have, Anthony's going to take a look at the stormwater management angle as well, so we're going to set that up.
We're going to look at that again?
Well, no, no, around the pump house, gets a lot of water, so we want to enhance the drainage around that. So we have a call this Thursday, and then hopefully get Steve in our offices next week after his meeting with DOH to dig into that more, so that lays on the horizon too, the next couple of months.
And, and Steve, do you have any sense at all about the bidding environment and whether prices have moderated or not?
Well, I can say that I think things have stopped rising, you know, I think it's, it's kind of leveled off. Materials and lead times are much more under control right now. There are still a few items that seem to still generate large lead times, things like electrical boxes, you know, the distribution panels, items like that, but pumps are now back to being available and, and, you know, just general equipment is, is back. But the prices haven't really dropped. You know, I'm seeing, it, it's tough, there was a, a bid up near Albany, I guess Syracuse. No, that's not where it was, I, I don't remember what it was, I wasn't quite involved with it, but the, I was surprised that the cost was, you know, a little less than what we've been expecting these days. I, I don't know if that's a great sign, but it was a facility similar to yours. The pool is just slightly smaller, but it was a swimming pool and a waiting pool. And so it was a comparison, but that was back, back, you know, it was definitely a smaller pool, and then they weren't building a new building, but they were closer to the 2.4 million that, you know, that, that's what that came in at.
Keep that coming. Do you have a sense that, I mean, you, you have previously indicated you had a sense for that sort of spectrum of hitters likely to respond to this bid request, I think they're filling the game?
Yes, yep, the, the contractors I work with are all generally the higher level pool contractors, which is what you want on a project like this, that's, you know, these are all, you know, obviously, it's a large pool, and you know, you know, we don't like the smaller pool guys working on it. But yeah, we, we'll still definitely have at least four bids, four bidders.
Okay, and then do you still have cautious optimism that if we were to have somebody signed on with an approved bid, let's say later spring, and allowed them to start stockpiling material, that it, does it remain cautiously promising to think that pool closes in Labor Day after the summer, and we rock and roll and open a new pool Memorial Day the following year?
I guess, yep. You know, starting early like that is definitely going to advance that along.
Okay.
Plus, I
Figure it's signed in blood that you think that's ominous.
You know, it's all just about, you know, it has, also has a lot to do with the weather, but we're, we'll be well prepared by then, you know, anyway. So we'll get a good start, and hopefully get the, the pools will probably be in the ground before the end of December. So that gives us January and, you know, on just to do the filter room and the, and the site work.
Stuff all sounds kind of, you know, perform, stuff that be dealt with, but nothing that's up in the works.
Yep.
Okay. You have any questions, comments to make? Just wondered on those administrative details, whether there's any, Steve could, whether Steve could give us an example of, like a wording change that has to be made and satisfied?
Okay, just off the top of my head, one of the things that I generally do is, it has to do with depth markers. I like to just locate the depth markers on my drawings with the proper wording, except I don't like to give the depth, because I have found that when we go into construction, I end up arguing with the contractor because he's building the pool to these little tiny depth markers instead of the dimensions that are shown on the drawing. That causes problems, you know, obviously, out in construction. And the DOH today didn't like that I had blank depth markers, and they want me to fill in the depth markers for them, which, you know, it's not a big deal, I can do that, but I'm also going to add some notes to my drawing that say, do not build the pool to meet the depth markers, make sure that you build it, you know, and the reason I say that is when you build the pool, you want the, the structure needs to be built to a specific dimension, right? Then we put a finish on it, and that finish isn't controlled, you know, it's generally around three eighths of an inch thick. So it can actually throw off the depth markers, which are not measured at the wall, they're measured three feet off the wall. You know, it's just a little, these minor little technical issues that just cause some problems. I, I like to make the contractor submit to me, these are the depth markers we're putting in. That makes him go out and measure them and get them accurate, rather than taking them off a drawing that, you know, due to construction tolerances, may not be exactly what it needs to be.
And then DOH comes and says, chisel them out because they're in a draw.
Right, so I, I prefer to have the contractor say, this is the depth markers we're going to put in, and then I can take that sheet that he gave me, and I can double check him and say, okay, those are depth markers, and let's put them in. Then we get to all get them right, and we don't have to do it over again. You know, it's just a process I prefer, but the, the DOH is now telling me that, that, you know, they consider that incomplete drawings and would prefer to see the depth markers on the drawing, so I'll put them on.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm still going to submit, you know, have them submit to me what the actual dimensions are.
Anything, you guys? No, I don't have anything else, thanks, very much, very informative. Okay. All right, so, anybody?
No, you asked the questions I would ask, so.
Okay. Anything to add to that, Mr. Morrissey?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Steve. Rock and roll, how it goes with the DOH, what did you say with the thirty-first?
It's next Tuesday, I believe, the thirty-first, yep.
All right.
If you go out for bids in March, when will we have them back?
I recommended a short bid period of two to three weeks, so we'd like to get them back kind of quick.
Great, get our two four, 2.4 million dollars back as quickly as possible.
Let's see what we can do.
All right, thank you, Steve.
All right, thank you.
Stay in touch, we'll look forward to the next report.
All right, thank you.
All right, next item on our agenda was a discussion regarding analysis of a potential tree ordinance, and attached to that is a proposal that we have from BFJ Planning to sit down in thinking about that, you want to?
Sure. So there has been work on a potential tree ordinance going back years, going back prior to my tenure on the Village Board, but more recently, in the past year, there's a committee that has been constituted that has been looking into a tree ordinance, and the committee has kind of reached a point in its evolution where there's a consensus about what a tree ordinance might look like, but it's a fairly technical piece of legislation, there are a lot of moving parts. And so the feeling was that having BFJ work with us on it so that we could make sure that, you know, it's well suited to the community and really works effectively as a piece of legislation makes sense. So we're looking at working with the, having this committee work with BFJ to draft something that we would then present to the public and get feedback on from the public.
BFJ provided a proposal which was attached to the agenda, and they proposed to bill on a time and materials basis, estimating the upper range of the project to be about $7,500. So BFJ has quite good experience with communities not only in Westchester, but throughout the metro area, and they've done a great job for us on similar ventures, and I certainly feel like they are the right tool for the job.
Yeah, and I, and I will say that, you know, this is a kind of legislation that like, you know, the approach that it's taking to these has shifted a little bit, and this committee is interested in having the goal really be maintaining a healthy tree canopy in Pleasantville. You know, we have our tree as part of our emblem. We're officially a tree, village, a tree community, and we have some beautiful older trees that are aging out. And so the question is, the idea is to have an ordinance that would have a tree replanting fund tied to it as well, that would provide opportunities to plant new trees and maintain a healthy tree canopy in Pleasantville.
So one of the interesting, as you already touched on, one of the problems we've had at various points, if a lot of our street trees in certain neighborhoods were all planted at the same time, they all grow in a similar way, and they all age out at a similar time. And you can go from a very nice street canopy and one that neighbors are very happy with to a circumstance where a whole lot of trees are being lost pretty fast. Interesting to think that we've lost an awful lot of trees on Bedford Grove between downtown and, and particularly between downtown and, say, BRS. Gosh, it must be twenty years ago, a lot of those trees are on the right of way between the curb and sidewalk, don't have a tremendously wide area to grow in, and quite a few of them were replaced, including some with a disease resistant elm. And I, as we were thinking about this, we're sort of paying attention to what's become of those trees, and they're really quite big at this point, and it struck me how grim the situation would be had they not been replanted when they were, because there, there's a little long stretch that's mostly trees that were planted in that replanting process about, about twenty years ago, so.
Yeah, I mean, it, it gets more, it seems to get more and more complicated, you know, like a lot of the native trees are suffering from various kinds of diseases, like you might have noticed that beach trees suddenly are under attack by this nematode that causes beach leaf disease, so, you know, all over the place. So, yeah, and so I've, I've also, I personally have talked to a lot of arborists about this as well, and it's really interesting to hear, you know, what they have to say. So we've got really good, I think, committee in terms of the expertise that's, that is sort of constituted in the committee, and the idea is to work with BFJ with their kind of expertise on the, you know, legal and legislative side of the equation.
Yeah, and also, you know, their experience with how this is being developed in other communities.
Yeah, they worked in Watercolor, for instance, and then, you know, a number of other communities as well.
Okay, any comments at all?
Any questions at all?
No, it's, it's good that we're way in this direction. I remember one of those big trees fell down right by, after Sunside, onto the house.
Yes, right on the corner there.
It's a big storm, like, yeah, it's a big deal, those huge trees.
Well, I mean, it's, it's and what happens, needless to say, perfectly understandably, to a homeowner who has a big tree fall on their house, they become quite nervous about the other trees, and quite a few trees get cut down and trimmed back, and turns out headline news, newer or younger trees properly pruned are less likely to fall in their house than the very old ones. So, you know, it's a sort of a trademark project in this realm about twenty-five years ago, when Harvard cut down in a very thoughtful manner quite a few trees in Harvard Yard, this iconic outdoor room with essentially a tree canopy ceiling. And they cut down perfectly healthy trees because of the imperative to diversify not only the species but the age, because they were confronting the circumstance where this really quite fabulous heavily curated tree canopy was all going to die at the same time, and there would have been several generations of of kind of small trees waiting to be what they, they once had. And I think that's been sort of pointed to many times, obviously in a much grander scale, but as, as a forward-thinking tree editor.
Yeah, well, one of the things that's come up is with the tree replanting program, that it's actually often better when you plant a new tree to plant a younger tree, because so much of it depends on the root system. So if you plant a tree that develops a really healthy root system early on, it often catches up and, you know, bypasses the larger tree that you might have planted. Anyway, we'll, we'll plenty time to go into all the details of it.
Sounds like we're all in, in a generally agreement on that. All right, are you there, Anthony Carr? I see you. Next item on our agenda is discussion regarding a proposal to issue a request for proposals for traffic signal optimization, and also appended to that item a memo for, from Anthony regarding your Platoon Track Twenty-four. Are you there, Anthony?
My, poor Anthony starts talking, one question I had is, why is it that this is our responsibility and not the county's responsibility, given that it's their road? But that's the same question.
Those are our, Anthony can talk in more detail, but those are essentially our
Our traffic lights?
Yeah.
All right, are you there, Anthony?
No, he's there.
You there?
Who is?
And you're here.
With his signature phone background.
Yeah. He's talking for me, shall I promote him to the house?
I don't see him, I just see the
There he is.
Yes, hi, Mayor, hi, Board, hi, Eric. Eric was making me a panelist, that's why I couldn't, I couldn't speak, I didn't have any, any permissions.
You as a panelist, so glad to see you.
All right, good evening. So, Mr. and Board, which, which item would you like to start with?
Let's start with traffic signal timing. I can tell you it's a, I think, painful that it's our job on County Road, but important to tackle because we really have some issues there.
Yeah, the, the traffic signals system, you know, the, the ownership has always been kind of a confusing thing, but since, since we own and operate the system, so the county over the years has offloaded a lot of their assets to municipalities, really. So at this point, counties are typically only responsible for the, the roadbed or the portion of road from one side of the curb to the other side of the curb, or if there's no curb, from one side of the edge of the pavement to the other side of the pavement. They have very little utilities at this point, and Eric and I, so Mayor and Board, you know, from the snow and ice agreement we have, we're also responsible to plow and, and maintain those roads. Now, if utility company does work, the county issues a highway work permit, and the road needs to be restored to their standards, but curbing and sidewalk is then, is then delegated to the responsibility of, of the municipality. So the county in, over the many years, has, went from designing a lot of things in-house and owning a lot of the infrastructure and assets to offloading them to the municipalities just because of the cost, and then, you know, there's a lot of roads in the county, right? So if each municipality takes a piece of it and maintains it, then it, it helps alleviate the financial and then the staffing burden on the, on the county. That's the premise to it, but the, the traffic signals are owned and operated by the village. You know, we were responsible for the maintenance and the upgrades of the controller cabinet, which is the brain, all the appearance, fan wire above the traffic signal heads, the pedestrian push button. You know, if we were going to do work on the county road as far as replacing a foundation for the traffic signal pole, then yes, we would need a county permit. Their traffic engineer actually just retired on Friday, Kevin Roseman, so the county for, for almost thirty years. So that's a big loss for the county there. But not to digress, the, since, since I started here in September, I had spoken to the village administrator, and, and Mayor, we've spoken about it, and I've received, you know, quite a number of inquiries and some concerns about the traffic signal timing, specifically at Wheeler Avenue and Bedford Road. It does, it is a bit erratic, we did have Verdi Electric come and, and take a look at the timing and see what could be done, but when we're out in the field, you know, we knew this RFP was coming out. So it, it would have been, I think, a little bit of a rush, and a little bit maybe too, too, too forward to have them do something where, you know, when I say do something, change the timing signal, signalization, or the timing, or the phasing for green or pedestrian phase, and not knowing what the impacts are to the other three lights. So a few, a few high-level things, the, these three signals are owned and operated by, by, by the village. They sit on a real county road, County Road Twenty-seventh. These signals are what they call semi-actuated, meaning that they, they, they respond to the presence of vehicles and/or people, right? And, and those vehicles are detected by either A, a camera, which we have, traffic loops, which we have some, others are paved over and others were cut during paving, but the traffic loops are, are wires in the ground, the rectangular wires that you see as you approach in the section, they're basically two wires that are twisted, and they're epoxy sealed. And those wires indicate the presence of a magnetic field generated from the metal in the car, and that sends a signal to the, to the light. But the video detection, which we do have, is very, very effective at, at obviously seeing whether a car is present, and obviously, the pedestrian phases are activated with the push button. So you have a very good system. It's, it's certainly not antiquated by any means, but of course, can probably be improved, right? So there's things that we can do, that I could look at and make changes to the traffic signal timing plans that are currently in your cabinets right now. So every traffic signal has eight and a half by elevens, landscape-looking plans with tons of rows and columns of how much, how many seconds dedicated to every phase, right? And each of these three signals on Bedford Road are coordinated. And, and when I say they're semi-actuated, meaning that they're not pre-timed. New York City has pre-timed signals, meaning it doesn't matter how many cars go through in section, you get twenty seconds that way, you get a minute and a half that way, that's pre-timed, that's kind of an older way of doing it, but in New York City, they still do it. The semi-actuated, which kind of does a combination of, and then is actuated. Semi-actuated is a combination of pre-timed, meaning they'll only give a maximum green before the, what's called an extended green phase, let's say, for vehicles going up and down Bedford Road, the busier their affair, and then it'll start timing out, because you can't keep extending the green, because then the side street don't get any time to, to complete their movements, so to speak. Right, so, but they, so that's a combination of pre-timed, and then having the loops and the cameras together, right? So it's kind of a mix, that's semi-actuated. And then actuated means that there's no pre-timing at all, everything is just based on who's there, who's not, and obviously, that can be problematic. Most of the traffic signals are semi-actuated. So that's just a kind of a brief overview of our signal system. It is coordinated, the three signals do talk to each other, but they're not coordinated with the state system on Manville Road, because I know a logical question to ask is, well, how come we're not looking at Manville Road? We will, when the consultant prepares their, their, their final deliverable and their draft deliverable, there's a lot of data they have to get, to gather, right? They have to get the traffic signal plans that we have currently in our cabinets, that's the first, that's really the data that we owe them. They're going to look at that and say, okay, this is how the village is operating now. Then they're going to go out and they're going to do traffic counts, they're going to do vehicle movements, pedestrian movements for the, I believe it's the weekday peak morning, the weekday midday, weekday PM, evening peak overnight, and then also weekend daytime, not nighttime. In addition, so they're going to get all their movements, they're going to see in real time who and what is coming from Manville Road. So that's why Manville Road, that traffic gets diverted to and from, whether it's through Marble, up Memorial, or vice versa, will be captured. Now, we're just not analyzing those in sections for a couple of reasons. One, it's, it's more costly of a proposal and a bit outside of the scope. Two, that does require state approval, that is exactly what we're going to do in Manville Road right now. And that's a whole different, different animal. We have the control over the village lights, obviously, and also, too, my own observations, the department's own observations, you know, you definitely, these lights can definitely benefit from, from a traffic signal timing and optimization, that's what it's called, right? So they'll, they'll look at it, they'll make the adjustments, so hopefully, Mayor, Board, Eric, on Wheeler Avenue, we're trying to get to the delis and trying to do irons, and, and running up to Village Hall, you know, you don't have four or five cars going through, and then it turns red again. So there's, there's two components to this, there's going to be, I'll call it the software part of it, right? I'll call it the software part of it, right? The the virtual. So you have a computer at home. It's running slow, right? There there's things that you can do. You can you can get apps and you can get programs to clean it up, right? All in the backend, make room for things, delete files. That's kind of the other softer way, right? So they're going to reprogram the traffic signal plans, but there's going to be a few iterations of what works and what doesn't work, right? That's the that's the software part of it. The hardware part of it is going to be more like, okay, do you need new cameras? Um, do you want to integrate loops again where there's no loops? Uh, do you want to do what's called adaptive signals with a, that's a combination of where a more um, a more prominent technology now is they sense who's in the intersection and and the signals kind of evolve and they respond, they become smart to the to the to the daily traffic patterns, right? That's adaptive. The proposal. Um, so they'll, the consultant will look at this and and they're going to look at the two things, the programming part, timing part, and they're going to look at the hardware part. So that's really, you know, they're going to give you a short term, give us short-term um recommendations and long-term recommendations. I don't think any of them, based on what I've seen, will entail removing the span wire, digging up the foundation. It's not going to be a complete a complete rebuild of these intersections. But, you know, this should be done every two to three years. Uh, you know, if you could Google it, uh, but in on the traffic engineering industry, every two to three years, you should look at your timing. Things change, development changes. Um, look at COVID. Right? I mean, so a lot of life as we know, it's changed somewhat, right? There's there's a baseline normalcy now. It might not be the same as it was in twenty twenty. Um, and that does affect traffic patterns. So you you know, two to three years is a good standard just to go back, issue the same RFP and say, hey, let's take a look here. And then we find out maybe more things. You know, the technology changes every three to five years for for cameras and detection. So that's in the proposal. And and most importantly, Mayor and Board, the the proposal also includes a build-out scenario up to twenty thirty-three um based on vehicle growth, based on potential future development. So if you look at one of the appendices, there's the zoning map, and we wanted to essentially locate the consultant or focus them on the central business district. Now, they could look at the whole village. Of course they can. Most of our intersections are unsignalized, there's stop signs, right? And then you have the state right away. That's off the table for now. Unless we decide we want to move forward with that in the future, which we can very well do. But the um, that scope will include looking at like seventy Memorial Plaza. Um, the civic space, the farmer's market, that will include a build-out scenario. Now, it doesn't include temporary um scenarios like construction projects, meaning, you know, the temporary vehicles that come to the site and off the site. That's not what it's intending to do. It's intending to model the 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 flow through the corridor in Bedford Road and and the connecting roads to them, to Bedford Road now and over the next ten years. Of course, you don't want to go past that because a lot could change between now and 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 year ten. I mean, really, you could stop at a year five, but we don't know what's going to go on in the future as far as development. Uh, there's no empty parcels in the central business district, not many if any left. There's going to be redevelopments, right? But there is traffic there now. There are chip generations there now. So it's like sewer, you know, and water. For redevelopments, people argue, well, you know, they can use more water. Not not really, because I've done that analysis too. And and with and with fixtures and and high, high, high efficiency fixtures and low flush fixtures and and people being more prominent about these fixtures, like the Cottage School and Pace University, we've actually seen our water consumption go down. We've seen it definitely go down a few hundred thousand gallons a day. So it 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 does help. Um, but the the uh, the software that they're gonna, consultants should use, of course, they could propose something different, but Synchro and and Sim Traffic are made by a company called Traffic Trafficware. And they are, they've been around forever. Um, to Synchro will give you kind of a what's happening at the intersection. Level of service is that's an important metric. A is great. You get through the intersection quick. F stinks, right? So they'll give you the A through F. They'll figure out the queue length, how many cars you're sitting back. You know, it kind of looks at the intersection as as a living entity. The Sim Traffic can then generate models based on individual vehicles, like buses, beeline bus. Um, our erratic driving habits. So when you blend the two together, that's why they're used in tandem. Sim Traffic will give you those pretty animations, both in two D and three D, that later on internally with staff, we will review and then present to to Mayor, you, Mayor and your board. Uh, and and it's a really, I've seen them, I've I've done them myself, I've prepared them. They're really, really graphical and they're really, they're really illustrative and they really show you everything that's happening. And that's based on actual turning movements and pedestrian movements, you know, vehicle movements. That's based on real life um counts. So that 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 is really what the what what RFP will eventually deliver to the village.
And are you uh are there quite a number of consultants in the game who would respond to this and provide some kind of?
Yes, we will. We will solicit directly um off the top of my head to at least four or five, much like we did for the water um the water audit, water audit and rate study. But uh, I've also seen that we're getting other consulting responses because we use uh BidNet Direct, which is a very good service. Um, people get alerts and notifications um from Long Island, from a little bit up north. Uh, but yeah, we 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 know the major players, not excluding anybody, uh, but I do know the firms that are, you know, very well respected and have been doing traffic slash transportation engineering for for decades. And and this certainly well within their scope. They've done bigger. Um, but you know, you don't want someone too big necessarily, but you don't want too small either. You want you want a good, a good consultant that's kind of seen seen it all, you know, a- and and they're going to be able to deliver a real life model that actually shows you and your board uh what what is happening and what's expected to happen over the next ten years based on the existing land use now and then potential future developments, which we'll sit with them, we'll talk to them. I'll defer to Eric, you and your board and Rob Hughes, who will know that information, but we'll 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 get in the think tank, we'll explain which parcels they should focus on. You know, but again, it's just kind of a shot in the dark for some of the parcels. Other parcels, we may know where it's going. So they'll they'll run the model. And again, it's just a visual tool to let the village know, okay, are we in good shape? Are there excessive queues? What can we do to alleviate the issue? And again, that model might change based on the inputs, right? It's only as good as the data going in, but there's no better data than the actual field data that they're going to collect over the next few weeks and months and then input into the model.
We've got somebody on board. How long do you think a study like this takes before we get back on record?
So we we set the RFP timeline, um, Mayor, in the uh, in the RFP, and I believe we anticipate, obviously, the dates can slide a little bit. I know August is a is a vacation month and a lot of people are traveling at that time, but we do have the consultant um slated to present to you and your board uh in August. That could change. We could, we could slide it to the left, to the right. But that's the final presentation. Uh, the draft presentation, the draft technical memorandum, um, I'd say from, if we advertise tomorrow, it's a one-month bit period, uh, proposal period, I should say. Uh, and then evaluation by March, we'll have hopefully somebody on board, uh, executed contract if the board approves. So uh between March and May, June, we should have a a draft deliverable. And then from June, June, July to August, they'll finalize the 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 technical memorandum and then then we'll see the presentation and then we'll go through everything.
All right. Sounds good. Anybody?
Um, while I have you here, Anthony, what's the opinion on the on the realigning of the lines in the corner of Manville and Wheeler, where the bump outs were? Um, I've had a lot of, a lot of residents just be concerned about bump out. Um, and the fact that now the there's a bigger car that's going northbound that it makes it very dangerous. Is there an idea when those those roads will get realigned again?
Yes, PCI and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, PCI was scheduled to come out either this week or next week to uh black out the um, the white paint, the existing white paint lines now and then modify the white paint lines, I believe, to give two eleven or ten and a half foot size lanes. So the the through lane uh going northbound up Manville will be widened from the approximate eight, eight and change feet to about ten, ten and a half. And then the other lane, the left, um, the left turn lane will be obviously shrunk a little bit. Uh, but that will occur, I believe, over the next week or two.
Okay. And will that be the same as what it will? The finalized lanes will be after the bump out on the other side or will it?
No, that 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 whole, that whole roadway, the road from curb to curb, um, you'll you'll be receiving, uh, the village will be receiving a a center island. Um, they're striping in front of that island and behind the island, and then the road will be milled and repaved. So that that will not reflect the permanent, um, the permanent uh striping and pavement marking layout.
But that's a temporary.
That is just temporary. Correct.
Question with respect to the, you know, the traffic study piece of um the light synchronization study. So you were talking about how they're projecting into the future changes that are likely to be made in the village. Do they also factor in the impact of, say, development in other communities, surrounding communities? Because I, it seems like a lot of the traffic that we're dealing with now has to do with the impact of what's happening in communities around us. I was just wondering if that's something that gets factored in at all.
Well, it'll it'll get factored in indirectly. You know, we 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 narrowed the scope down for the analysis area to the three signalized intersections and then the central business district. So any, any developments that are going on now that the that the that the consultant will capture in their in their um record, their their traffic counts will be incorporated into the model. They could certainly so the short answer is no. In the RFP, we don't ask them to go to adjacent municipalities because it would almost be too hard to figure out which developments, when they're going to happen. Are the drivers going to take that route? Are they gonna, are they gonna eventually get to the Bedford Road corridor? There's a there's a lot of variables that, you know, might not be constructive for the model and might not actually represent uh what's happening out in the field. So the so the development is only limited uh to what could possibly happen in the A one uh central business district.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. So then jump into, uh, I think a much shorter conversation, truck twenty-four.
Yes, our two thousand one international. Yes, Mayor. So
Twenty-two years old?
I'm sorry?
Only twenty-two years old.
It it's a baby. Um, you know, this is a conversation and and a matter that that predated myself. So the village administrator asked me to speak uh to staff and obviously use my own experience and and discretion and judgment and then provide a memorandum of 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 my understanding that would accurately represent the department's needs. So truck number twenty-four is a two thousand one international. Truck twelve, it's in that chart, so I'll keep it high level. We have another two thousand one international, the twin, we call it. The twin, the twin truck to to truck twenty-four is twelve, divided by two. That's how I remember it. Um, truck twelve and truck twenty-four are two thousand ones. The truck twenty-one is a two thousand eleven Mack ten-wheeler. Okay, that's the only ten-wheeler we have in the in the fleet. But a six-wheel truck, a ten-wheel truck, they're both heavy-duty trucks. They could both salt and plow. So just, you know, and I and I give the definition of what a heavy-duty truck is, thirty-three thousand pounds, six to ten wheels, it could hold five tons of spoil. You know, you could find different definitions everywhere, but that's generally more the mainstream definition. So um, a- after evaluating this for some several months now and looking at our fleet, obviously, the age alone reflects that, okay, the truck is past the life expectancy of anywhere from ten to fifteen years. My estimate on a life expectancy based on what I've seen, I should say, recommendation is ten to fifteen, but you could find literature ten to thirteen, ten to twelve. But it should give you a comfort level that that is technically the band ten to fifteen, you know, a- and really where the trucks get beaten up the most, to be honest with you, it's it's the salting, it's the corrosion, it's it's the salt that goes down um from the body into the conveyor belt, which brings it to the spreader in the back and then and then and then, you know, spread onto the roadway. So salt is 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 public enemy number one as far as a truck is concerned. Um, so currently, right now, truck number twenty-four only plows. It does not salt. It's salted up to twenty seventeen, but it had to retire its salt and shoes uh in twenty seventeen because there was, there was the too many hydraulic issues with the the pumps, the the and and there was too much corrosion. It was accelerating pre-existing issues with the truck. So in twenty seventeen-ish, the decision was made, okay, let's not salt this anymore. It's still a mainline truck. It's still a main road truck, but we're going to keep it just to plow. So right now, DPW's fleet, we have, we have two mainline trucks, two heavy-duty trucks that do the salting and the plowing, right? That's truck number uh twenty um one to plow and salt. Truck number twenty-four could only plow. So we have a backup salter to truck number uh twenty-one, which is truck twelve. That's the, that was the sister truck or the twin truck to to currently truck number twenty-four. That's already, that's already pushing it too, because that's what twenty-two years old as well. So when your backup is twenty-two years old to to the to the twelve-year-old truck, it starts becoming a little problematic. And these are not bad problems. These are good problems. I mean, look, it's like a boil in a house, right? It's like the car you have to replace. How how much longer do you kick it down the curb? How much longer do you invest into it? And so it's not just cost feasible. So the um, the the long and the short of it is that we have two heavy-duty plow trucks that plow the main roads, all the 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 village, the state and the county roads. Uh, one salts and plows, the other one just plows for now. In order to preserve the useful life of the truck, as we've learned from the from the past, we will only, if if approved, and we do procure a truck number, new truck number twenty-four, what we would do is we would use that to salt and plow and then keep the other truck, which I guess would be truck twenty-one, which could also salt and plow. They would both definitely plow, but we'd only salt with one truck. Because to be honest with you, if you have two heavy-duty trucks during a snowstorm, right? You're only, you're only salting either before the storm or you're salting after the storm. You're generally not salting during the storm. So the the mindset or the thought of the operation, which I've seen and 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 our DPW has it down pat, is that one heavy truck would break off, become a dump truck for snowy move operations in the downtown, right? Haul off the snow, take it away, and then the other truck can continue to salting. So you don't necessarily need two salters. But you definitely need two plows. And and regardless whether you're looking at it as a salter or plow, the fact is you have a two thousand, two two thousand one trucks and one two thousand eleven truck. So the, I I think it's a very um wise decision, uh, if approved, uh, to to move forward with the procurement of truck twenty-four. If we don't issue the purchase order by January thirty-first of this month, uh, what what happens is we lose our production queue. So we fall to, you know, almost like a Q four queue, right? And we get pushed out of the queue and it and it really could delay procurement of the truck chassis, which is the vehicular skeleton, which holds everything together. Uh, that you put the body on and you put the plow on, you put the salt on. It would, it would delay that for an extra year. And then the, and and an additional winter. Um, you you know, the 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 trucks, the Freightliner truck, very good truck. It's it's it's, doesn't have quite the MAC price tag, but it's a very good truck. The chassis I'm I'm talking about there. So the the um, you know, we did look for the best deal. Like I said, MACs are a little bit more expensive because you're paying for the name, even though I mean, everything inside of a MAC is actually Volvo. Um, there's really nothing more that belongs to a MAC at this point. Um, but yeah, I I definitely do agree that i- i- it's in the village's best interest and the department's best interest um to recommend uh moving forward with the procurement of the truck. Uh, you you know, we don't want to be stuck on a on a main road situation where truck twenty-four goes down and then and then our backup doesn't work either, and we have one, one one heavy-duty truck to to plow and salt. That that's not a good thing. We can get it done. Everything will just take longer. That's that's the thing, right? So it just, it just delays the operational time and doesn't provide any redundancy or any belts and suspenders in case something else goes wrong.
So it's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have a resolution on to appropriate that from fund balance, right, Eric?
Uh, yeah, it would actually be from uh the general fund budget, um, water.
Yeah.
Plan for the general fund.
And so that would, we approve that tonight. That allows you to get the order in by January thirty-one, and then when does the truck arrive, do you think?
The truck would likely arrive if the PO for the chassis and the PO for the for the body and the plow, two separate POs, two separate vendors. Um, if if it's placed, if they're both placed by end of January on time, uh, we would get the chassis by March to May of twenty twenty-four. And then the uh body, the truck body outfitter needs three months after that to basically put put the body on the truck. So basically, by the summer of twenty twenty-four, if worst case, fall of twenty twenty-four, the truck would be outfitted, road-ready and 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 able to be utilized by DPW.
Okay. So any further questions on that? You gave us a very detailed description, but that followed up a very detailed memo. I thank you for that.
Very welcome, Mayor.
And uh, we appreciate that effort and uh we'll talk soon.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board.
Bye.
Eric, have a good night. I'll talk to you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Anything to add to that, Eric?
Nope.
Okay. So then the last item on our work section agenda was just an update, uh, and uh regarding the uh housing-related development proposals that uh that are coming uh down from Alden. Uh, when the governor made her state of the uh state address a couple of weeks ago, she included uh some detail on what she calls the Housing Compact, which is an overall plan uh to generate eight hundred thousand new housing units statewide over the next decade. Uh, there's a lot of detail yet to be filled in, uh, much of which we expect to see perhaps as soon as Wednesday when the state budget is is presented. But the short version of a longer story is that there are two components that appear to be likely to have an effect on us. Uh, the first is a proposal that would require all downstate municipalities to generate a three percent increase in housing units in every three-year cycle. Upstate community is a one percent increase. Um, and uh so what that would mean is there'd be a required three percent increase every three years in the total number of housing units. It isn't yet clear whether that three-year period is a rolling period or whether it's three years, it ends and a new three-year starts. Um, in our specific circumstance, uh, with with the uh several projects that are uh uh in the pipeline right now, including seventy Memorial next to the post office and uh the project, the lighthouse project down by the uh sawmill. seventy memorial next to the post office and uh the project, the lighthouse project down by the uh sawmill, uh we would achieve that three percent uh quite straightforwardly, but the suggestion here is that that requirement would continue cycle after cycle. So uh that's driven by a bunch of factors, including the fact that uh New York State and certainly downstate by this analysis have lagged uh far behind the required generation of new housing. Um, it's certainly been an issue in the New York metro area uh where, for example, again, by the governor's analysis, uh the growth in the number of jobs has substantially exceeded the growth in in uh housing units. And uh in fact, she has statistics in her State of the State Address that compare the housing generation to similar circumstances elsewhere in the region and in the country and arrives at the conclusion that uh the reason house prices and rental prices have skyrocketed in the manner they have due obviously to a lot of forces, but one of them is uh completely inadequate supply. So that uh is one piece. Details to follow. Uh the second piece is a a renewal of what what last year called transit-oriented development and is back again, although so far without any detail. The short version of a longer story there is that a circle of half mile radius, in other words, a mile across circle uh would be centered on every train station, Long Island Railroad and Metro North. Uh, and everything within that one mile across circle would potentially be required to be upzoned by state edict to a different density level. We don't know what the details of that will be. We may know that on Wednesday in the budget proposal, but uh certainly what was proposed last year was quite problematic, especially for a community like ours where a mile across circle incorporates a uh a a very substantial part of our residential housing base. So all kinds of issues to be discussed there, including um the issue of home rule where historically New York State has uh uh been a home rule state where individual municipalities are controlled their own zoning, but also the obvious and I think uh unassailable fact that we are also in a housing uh crunch and that housing crunch is producing a circumstance where uh regular people can't find a place to live. So a whole lot of factors colliding together. Uh, and uh we will know more likely later this week. I'm the legislative chair for the Westchester Municipal Officials Association and we have a housing subcommittee that is paying close attention to this. Uh, we're headed to Albany for the New York Conference of Mayors Legislative Conference, which is the beginning of February for uh three days and will not only get a lot more information about the details of this proposal, but also of its uh the political lay of the land and understand uh who who is behind what. But I I will also say that these proposals, which are uh uh really quite sweeping, are heavily supported by a little bit of an unusual alliance, which is uh the the uh more progressive uh folks who are seeking expansion of housing, moderation of housing costs and the like. And uh on the other side of the equation, business-oriented folks, contractors, uh developers and unions who are very, very much interested in uh seeing the approval process for uh significant projects to be easier and quicker, essentially saying the the forces that sometimes make it extraordinarily expensive to get approvals sometimes are extraordinarily expensive to seek approvals, which ultimately fail uh are are in the way of the big picture. So I uh I lay that out there as a matter that's of significant concern at the moment. More later. You guys, like, pass out to you guys material as it's come. Um, and my New York State is not alone in this discussion. There is, there are uh some existing legislation already exists in neighboring states, including Connecticut. So.
What are two um big projects that are happening right now? Kind of set us up and what's to go on that line that we are kind of ahead of what they're trying to do?
It would appear that we're certainly ahead of the three percent requirement in a three-year period, depending on what the free for period is and when it starts and whether it's a rolling three-year period or whatever. You know, another interesting question is if in a given three-year period a community exceeded three percent with that credit rolling to the following period, you know, all of those things are conversations that we'll be having in the next few weeks and certainly we'll be having in Albany. Um, I I would say the the uh issues for us are more fraught uh uh with this
The transit oriented.
Transit-oriented development circle because that is a, at least as it was presented last year, and it may be different, a uh a pretty darn one instrument to create more housing, almost uh uh without too much uh recognition of the fact that many communities wildly differ. So. Okay, I've had a couple of conversations with colleague Mayors of the River Towns and said, now, hold it. This isn't fair. Half your circle's in the river.
So so this could potentially be part of the budget?
It will definitely be part of the budget. This is a longstanding Albany gambit, close side of the aisle to large the budget with uh stuff that, you know, in a different
Yeah.
era or
The federal government does, yeah.
So so stay tuned. Uh, I will say um a lot was said about this at this time last year when when the transit and development thing was floated. The three percent growth thing had not been floated. Um, and uh uh I think that matter was pretty quickly revived. So I don't know what the lay of the land is, and we will know more soon. As I say, headed to Albany in a couple of weeks or one week, very, and um we'll know quite a bit more about it, but uh there are very significant uh things uh going on in Albany that are likely to have a very significant impact on on uh places like Western. All right. It is eight P M.
Um, people are having trouble getting in that front door. I don't know.
Oh, really?
Bill, how do you feel?
Yeah.
I just got a text from my friends that that she's waiting for the door to be open.
Yeah, Bill?
For some reason, it's not the same.
Yeah, maybe just put something in the door, you think?
Yeah.
All right, we'll wait a second here for folks who may have had trouble with it.
Guys, you guys are really hard to hear too. I don't know if you can turn the mics on or but you cannot hear you very well.
Well, feel free to move forward. We'll try to talk louder.
I'm just saying that you can have a big audience. You can't, people can't hear you.
No, we don't have mics on right now, so we'll
Those mics do not
No, they're not.
No longer work?
Well, those are the mics that, you know, in P C T V films
Right.
they would use. So they're not filming. We're using the owl.
Right, they don't, they don't, they can't work in conjunction with the owl?
Um, we've never done that. I don't know.
Yeah, perhaps. That's gonna have to go back to Shane and find out how we're getting.
Yeah.
I mean, most, meaning obviously it's not an issue, right?
Yeah, right.
Nobody here.
Yeah, yeah.
Well.
But we'll talk later.
Yeah. I'll translate for you if you need me to.
Okay.
No, we'll. So uh we'll just wait a couple of minutes here, make sure the front door is staying open here.
Peter, to support that you're part of, is that a lobbying effort or is that just a
Westchester Municipal Institution, all forty five municipalities in which there are members.
Yeah.
I'm on the executive committee and then thus on the legislative committee. Twelve of us are on the executive meeting, representing cities and towns and villages. Um.
Do you guys have a position on this? I mean, are you fighting against these legislations?
Well, we're gonna see. What I I can tell you, the conversation last year uh varied depending on where you sat. Not every community found themselves in the same position.
Um, yeah.
As you might imagine.
Well, then those communities like this are welcome to do it. So.
So again, you know, the the issue, the issue is um ultimately how it's gonna play in Albany and they yeah, and let's play them. All right, do we feel confident the door is open?
Yeah, the door is open.
Okay. All right. Uh, we'll depart our uh work session and begin our regular session. Good evening. Welcome to the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, January twenty three. Uh, as it is always the case now, we are meeting in person here at Village Hall and you're welcome to attend in person. Uh, we also have a parallel Zoom link, as you can see here. I can report tonight that trustee David Vinyamori is participating remotely. Uh, trustee Michael Pepperd is unavailable tonight. He had a previous uh responsibility at his workplace. Uh, so three of us here in person, David remotely. Um, as is always the case, within a few days, uh a tape of the meeting will be available at P C T V seventy six dot org. Uh, both this meeting and previous meetings, you can watch them uh and uh zip forward to whatever sections are relevant uh to your concern. So uh tonight, the first matter on our agenda is a public hearing concerning uh introductory local law twelve of twenty two, twenty twenty two, to enact a moratorium on development in the central business A one district, including the central business A one subarea. Is there a motion to open the public here?
Some.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, welcome to the public hearing. I can also report that participating remotely is Jennifer Gray, uh our village attorney, particularly focused on uh land use matters. And also uh online is Frank Fish of B F J Planning, uh which is the planning firm that we have worked with effectively on many subjects for quite a few years. And it is B F J, Frank and Sudhupavate leading uh a proposed uh study process associated with this moratorium. Uh, the memo from B F J Planning suggesting the scope of work for what they would undertake uh is included on our agenda uh for anyone who might wish to see it. Uh, also attached, uh our referral comments from Westchester County Planning and referral comments from our village planning commission, uh both required referrals as part of uh the proposal to create a moratorium. And uh those letters are also attached to the agenda and available for you. Um, I can also report that we received a letter from representatives of Fort Mun's or Bedford Road, which is the bank building uh property diagonally opposite Village Hall at the corner of Wheeler and Bedford, expressing their uh concerns about the proposed moratorium. So Jennifer, can I ask you to summarize for everybody uh the terms of the moratorium?
Sure, absolutely. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you. Wish I could be there in person, but this is um good enough, I guess. Um, so the moratorium uh was proposed towards the end of last year, um in uh November, December. The purpose of it is going to be to evaluate your existing zoning um as it stands today. As most of you will remember, back in twenty seventeen, um you all engaged in a comprehensive plan, master plan update. Um, there was certain zoning that was adopted in response to that, mainly to encourage development of underutilized sites. Um, you enacted some density um incentives uh to encourage mixed-use development specifically in your A one district. Um, it's now been uh five plus years since that has occurred with the intervening pandemic. Um, so uh the village board endeavors to reevaluate the zoning, make sure it's still working for the village, make sure it is still consistent with the with the intent and um goals of the comprehensive plan. So in order to do that and maintain the status quo while the village board is engaging in these studies, uh the village board has proposed a land use moratorium. Um, the land use moratorium will preserve the status quo for a period of six months. Uh, that's the term of the moratorium under the proposed local law. And during that six-month period, the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals uh will not be able to move forward with any determination under SECR under the State Environmental Quality Review Act or issue any final determination on a building permit variance, special use permit, site plant or subdivision application within the A one district. Um, now, there are some exemptions to the moratorium. Um, this applies to any application that's been filed with the village on or after November sixteenth of last year. If you recall, that was the date that you you had your town hall public hearing, um uh public meeting, sorry. Um, so that, so if enacted, the moratorium will apply to any app- application filed on or after November sixteenth, except for the following types of applications. Um, area variances for one or two family dwellings, um building permit applications for work that does that does not require any approvals from a land use board, so the planning commission or the zoning board of appeals, and any applications that involve work that the building inspector reasonably believes is being performed primarily for health and safety reasons. Um, or uh applications for work that that's being undertaken in an existing commercial or retail structure with a gross floor area of four thousand square feet or uh or less. So those are the exempt applications. The moratorium will not apply to those applications. Those applications will be allowed to go forward. Anything else um may, applicants may file applications um if they are subject to the moratorium. It is within the applicant's discretion as to whether or not they want to proceed with a review before the planning commission or the zoning board um as as applicable. However, the planning commission and the zoning board will not be able to issue final decisions or issue a secret determination while the moratorium is in place. Um, the board of trustees under the local law does have the option to uh terminate the moratorium early. Um, if you've in, you know, finished engaging in your studies um and you've determined whether you feel any zoning changes are necessary prior to that six-month period, you do have the option to terminate the moratorium early. Likewise, you also have an option to extend the moratorium if you need more time um to complete your studies and determine whether any zoning changes are necessary. Um, the local law also includes a hardship um procedure. So any applicant, any property owner that is subject to the moratorium um may apply to the board of trustees for a hardship waiver um requesting an exemption from the provisions of the moratorium. Um, that application will require a noticed public hearing and the board of trustees uh can grant that exemption with with any conditions that it deems reasonable and necessary. Um, let's see, and that's the standard for that application is uh to find that there is a severe financial or economic hardship directly caused as a result of the moratorium. Um, so that is uh in a nutshell, uh a general summary of the moratorium, its applicability, what it covers, what it doesn't, um and and some of the general terms. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Um, otherwise, um happy to hear from the public.
Yeah, this is the David Vinyamori trustee. Can you um, you read the the letter from the county?
Yes.
Can you uh explain that to us?
Yeah, if you just bear with me, I read it when it first was issued. I'm just gonna pull it up here to ref- refresh my memory. Just give me one second here. Oh, sure. So the more, the the comments from the county, um so the county is essentially saying that it appreciates the efforts that the village has made over the years in um in encouraging development, particularly near your downtown area, close to the train station, uh transit-oriented re- uh residential development. Um, the county is concerned that the moratorium, as moratoriums typically do, have sort of a chilling effect over development. Um, both development that would be subject to the moratorium and development outside of the scope of the moratorium, frankly. Um, so their concern is that by enacting this moratorium, you're sending a message to um developers that uh, you know, that that you may be uh in the future enacting zoning regulations. uh in the future enacting zoning regulations that would restrict sort of the transit-oriented residential development that is being encouraged by your zoning over the past several years. Um, so they're expressing that concern, but then leaving the discretion to you, as they should, to determine whether that moratorium is necessary within your village.
And they specifically made a comment about any potential extension, though, didn't they?
Yes, so a six-month timeframe is is absolutely reasonable for a moratorium. Um, and um extensions of that are reasonable. The the timeframe for a moratorium is, you you really, you don't want to tie up property rights for too long. Um, you want to make sure that during the term of the moratorium, you are actively engaged in trying to find a so a solution for the concerns that that you have. Um, so diligently pursuing the studies with with B F J and others um and determining whether any zoning changes are needed. What um typically courts who are reviewing challenges to moratorium, what they don't like to see is communities enacting moratoria and simply, you know, um, le- letting it lie without actively pursuing solutions to to the community's concerns. Um, so their their caution there is to stay with the six-month time period and and try to complete your studies within that period rather than extending it for another six months or or longer.
And along those lines, are there any things we should take away from the letter from the owners of the property that includes the Chase Bank Building?
So as I understand it, their primary concern is um, they feel that they are, and certainly, you know, the the property owner or the representative can can speak for themselves as well. But um if I were to paraphrase or summarize their position, as I understand it, they are concerned that the moratorium um is is unduly burdensome against them particular, uh them in particular, because as they have said, they're um either the only or one of the only pending applications in the A-one district, um particularly for a mixed-use development. Um, so that that's that's their concern. Um, the moratorium, however, does not, you know, apply to to their property only. It does apply to the entire A-one district. So in that regard, all property owners in the A-one district are are, you know, similarly burdened unless they're exempt from the moratorium.
With respect to the timing, the six-month period um starts from the moment that the local law is filed with the Secretary of State, correct?
That is correct, yes.
So, uh, there was some confusion on people's part, understandably, about the November sixteenth date as the as the uh beginning date uh that captures applications. That date was chosen because it's the date when we receive uh public input at the town hall meeting. But the six-month time clock starts ticking from the point at which we file the law, right?
That is correct, yes. The scope of the moratorium goes back to capture applications filed on November sixteenth or later. But the moratorium itself does not become effective, if granted by the board, um until you file the local law with the Secretary of State of New York State. Um, that's when when most local laws become effective upon that filing date.
Let me just add, um, as I already mentioned, uh, and and available as part of the agenda is the proposal we received from B F J uh to undertake uh a study process to assist us during this preliminary process. And uh it is our expectation that we work with B F J through that process and then uh with the results of that in hand, uh engage a public process to uh discuss all of that with the community. So Frank, anything to add to that at the moment?
Uh, no, just to say that the process, I think the board has um our our letter, it was really a letter from both Jennifer and Susan outlining uh the process of the zoning study. We would, we would do what's called a a soft site analysis, a build-out analysis, uh, and that is trying to uh sort of project, if you will, uh what impacts there could be uh from the uh current uh zoning and the incentives that were put in uh to the current zoning as a result of the master plan that Jennifer described earlier. And then um after that, we would look at what are the impacts of that expected build-out in terms of traffic, uh the school system, um services, water, that type of uh public services, emergency services. So once that's in place, we'd be able to present that to the trustees um and go through it with you. Uh, and I think that can be done, we we reasonably think that can be done within the six-month moratorium period.
So thank you for that, and then we'll invite comment. I I can report that uh in the resolutions we have on our agenda tonight is a resolution to approve that um uh moratorium, pending any comment that might change that thinking in the course of this public hearing. So uh we will invite comment. Uh, we'll start with folks who are here in the room and uh then invite comment from folks who are attending via Zoom. Uh, within the room, please come up, give us your name and address, and let us know your thoughts.
Yes, I'm Rooney twenty-six, Hillview Drive, Pleasantville. As far as the more the the moratorium goes, uh, I'm a little bit confused because one of the reasons for it was because the building has gone so out of control and so quickly that it's it's gone way ahead of what the town is probably able to handle, such as fire, water, police, sanitation, when all these buildings, all these apartments are filled. Um, no one's even moved in yet, and the town is at a standstill. But the only thing that is usually uh picked out as far as what this is causing is the traffic and the standstill, which is a great problem. Um, but it's not the only problem that this overdevelopment has caused. Um, I I bring a a true a true instance that 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 happened just last week. On Friday, on the twentieth, January twentieth, Pleasantville had two fire calls. Um, but two fire calls were within sixty seconds or more apart. I thought it was the same call, but it was two separate calls. And that's in a village that we're having trouble getting members to be on the fire department at this point. And when there's more people, more building, more reasons for the fire department and the police department to be called out to do something, we are absolutely stressed beyond control, in my opinion, which probably could be proven or disproven, that uh our systems are are really working hard. Um, the um the um moratorium, that conversation tonight, which is a little upsetting part of this whole process, was to not penalize any builder, but to curtail them for a bit until we see what all this construction is being done in terms of people moving in. Now, if I heard it correctly, the the owners to the owners of the Chase, uh, the Bank of New York building, the Chase building um uh across the street already brought to the town uh planning commission their proposal to go ahead with the project, which was somewhat shocking. Um, because this more, the moratorium, if it's not going to go into effect until you put it on paper that it's going to happen, then just about everything that I was seeing that was hoping to be prolonged a bit, the ju- the judge is not going to happen because that's another major project that, to me, sounds like it's a done deal. It's going to be done. Um, and even if it is going to be done, it should still wait until the surveys are in to see what all these new apartments are doing to to the village.
I don't mean to interrupt. Could I touch on that point? I think you misunderstood. Uh, the moratorium, if we adopt it tonight, is retroactive to any application filed November sixteenth or thereafter. That captures the project you just described at the bank building.
No, I thought it illuminated.
No, it includes them. And and as I mentioned, they've sent a letter expressing their concern about that.
Sure.
Um, they 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 uh did present to the planning commission, recognizing as the as the uh moratorium text makes clear that an applicant is free to continue a review process if they choose to, but it is at their own risk. Which is to say, there is the potential that as the result of the moratorium and the review that's attended to it, their zoning opportunities may change. So their project is definitely included. It is not a done deal. The fact that it was before the planning commission reflects the fact that they decided of their own volition to continue. And and I assume, and they can speak for themselves, that uh they are uh likely to come forward and say that they feel their project should not be included and seek a way, but that's entirely up to them, and they haven't uh kept them way in on that.
Okay, um, the um what the governor has proposed, or pur- proposing for the second time, in any municipality, in any village such as ours, if if you have to go along with so uh so much percentage each year, as you said, what happens when any place runs out of space? How can you keep doing that? And aren't we out of that space as we speak?
So Tom is referring to a discussion we had in work session where I described the two proposals that are have been presented by the governor as part of her uh state of the state, and more detail to come as part of the budget. We'll know more in the next week or two. I'll report on that, but both of them suggest that our uh uh housing development would at least in part uh be uh subject to some state reporting. So we're definitely, as I mentioned, I'm the legislative chair of the Westchester Municipal Officials Association. We're going to Albany in a week and a half and spending three days there. I'll come back and give you a full report. Uh, we are very much concerned about how that may play out and what it may all mean. Stay tuned.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jonathan Cunningham, fourteen, Teno Delane. Um, first thing I'd like to do is, uh, I I appreciate the county's weighing in. That's legislatively, I guess, I understand what they have to do. Um, I read that, I I read their their letter more as pro forma than anything else, but to the degree that it's not, um. I I would just say I really wish they would spend uh as aggressive, if not more aggressive, of their time with communities that are been more restrictive on development around their train stations and transit units than the village has been. Um, because I really didn't read anything in that letter that recognized the fact that this village is under incredible stress due to all the development that is happening around the transit center. Uh, that's just my editorial, but you know, don't don't not look before a comment on that. Um, uh, I'm glad that Tom asked the questions. Uh, the timing was confusing because the retroactive portion back to May, March, or excuse me, November sixteenth um has the chilling effect of applicants that have happened between then and now, yet the moratorium, six-month timer, actually goes into effect whenever you guys file it with the uh with the state.
That is true.
So is in essence, for all practical purposes, seemingly, a bit more than a six-month moratorium. Um, uh, from a practical standpoint, and I appreciate that as well. Um, uh, the only thing that I don't, I I would urge you to consider, and I'm not sure why we've restricted it to the A-one district. Um, uh, first of all, we're not that big of a village. Um, I don't need to tell any of you guys that. Uh, and some of the larger developments that have been that are on the horizon are actually outside of the A-one district. So it seems to me that, I don't know, we should, we should just include the entire village uh uh border as as part of the moratorium. Um, because I think that the analysis that's going to be done uh certainly on public safety, uh but also other infrastructure and and other traffic and 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 such considerations uh would benefit from the the idea of knowing and incorporating the potential of of what could happen outside of the village or outside of the A-one district, but still in the village. Um, it would, I think, inform your decisions in terms of better inform your decisions in terms of how best to look at the zoning uh going forward. So uh, I think the A-one district is a great start. I don't think it's large enough for a more holistic decision-making process, I think, is required. Um, and I would urge you to to expand beyond the A-one. I'm not sure uh Jennifer and and her team can tell us that that just creates way too much work and and, you know, pushes this beyond potentially six-month analysis. Um, if that's the case, okay, but uh, but I think that to have a really good deci- to make a really good decision based on this moratorium, uh, my suggestion is include the entire village, not just the A-one district.
And and would that proposal mean that literally the entire village would be frozen? Homeowners couldn't make any changes, homeowners?
No, no, you don't, don't you have a waiver for four thousand feet and less?
Downtown A-one.
Well, I mean, if you extend it up to the entire village, then you're not affecting very many homeowners.
Well, would you allow a private subdivision of a lot that's legally subdivided? I mean, there are all kinds of questions there, but essentially, um, I I assume when you say that, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're referring to the former Bank of New York property up behind Foxwood?
That's one of them, sure.
Okay, so, um, uh, that property uh uh is currently zoned uh campus office.
Mm-hmm.
And uh it would be a a a long and uh difficult process, which we may engage at the time that there's a proposal there uh to rezone that in some way.
Yeah.
Is what you're suggesting that we ought to proactively rezone that in some way?
I am saying that based on the analysis of the moratorium, that would give you a much better sense of how you might want to think about rezoning that if that were indeed your intent.
So here's what I uh would say about that. I think we've chosen the A-one because that's the district that i- incorporates uh uh almost certainly the likely zones for new multifamily housing, not to suggest it can't be anywhere else, but the B-zone doesn't permit it at the moment. Most of the residential zones uh don't permit a- any kind of dense multifamily. And the Bank of New York property as currently, former Bank of New York property, has currently zoned up behind Foxwood, doesn't permit residential either. So, um, if the concern, which I think we've literally heard, is about the increase in housing units, increase in population, et cetera, uh, I think we're aiming in the right place, and I think we ought to focus on those key parts. That isn't to suggest that uh either the repopulation of that site up behind Foxwood for its commercial use or a proposal to convert it to some other use doesn't have impact. Of course it does, but then uh, I do feel as though uh we're doing the right thing first. And uh the idea of reconsidering the entire village zoning is a very, very large project and one that uh would go on for quite a long time.
But I I think there are ways in which indirectly the kinds of reflection that we're going to be engaging in through the moratorium will have implications for the village more broadly, right? Because we're going to be looking at issues such as, you know, emergency services, you know, impacts on various aspects of the village, and also in some way, I think, thinking more holistically about a number of questions. You know, for instance, one of the issues that came up um a a number of times at the public meeting that we had was questions about affordability, you know, young people who grew up in Pleasantville who would like to be able to live here, who can't live here, or um empty nesters who would like to remain in Pleasantville feel like they can't live here. So at least for me, it seems to me like the moratorium is also the opportunity to kind of do a a deep think about some of these um more comprehensive issues. And and I also have concerns about some specific sites, you know, including the the New York uh Bank uh site in particular.
I agree with that. It's not, I, we're, we're not going into this with blinders and per the discussion we had in work session. Uh, what comes down from Albany is very possibly going to affect this conversation in a significant way as well, so.
Well, I mean, and, and again, I, I don't want to conflate the, the, the state level. Um, uh. Potential legislation with what's going on locally.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, 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 I think that, that, that the state level issue demands its own attention. Um, and understanding and, and I appreciate and will appreciate. You guys informing us on that, um, because certainly, uh, I think there's a lot of passion in this area that, in this community that. Um, and, and, and lack of, uh, a lack of, uh. Shyness, if you will, about reaching out to our state representatives to let them know exactly how we feel about the state regime and potentially wrecking a community. With, you know, wide, wide wielding, um, mandates that, you know, at three percent, the, the compounding effect of three percent over ten years. Basically, you know, you, you hear people on these, uh, uh. Social media sites saying, oh, and, and I push back on this all the time about Pleasantville becoming a white plane. But honestly, three percent compounding a year, it becomes a small, small town, not a village anymore in a very quick amount of time.
Well, and the idea that there's no limit on it seems.
It's nonsense, honestly. It's kind of crazy, which is why I don't want to get too excited about it.
It's speculative at the moment.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, but, but that's something certainly to monitor. Uh, my concern is more with the moratorium and, and what's going on, what is it within our control? Um, uh, so I urge you not to, David Vinge Mori, out in Netherlands, I know that you've got some. Concern over the, the county's letter. I wouldn't be too concerned about it. Um, and, you know, like a lot of things, uh, sometimes you need to push back where, where folks want to push on you. Um, uh, especially when it comes to our own, own home rule. Uh, so, uh, but anyways, uh. The only thought on the A one again versus the village-wide is when you're looking at. Public safety, for example, it's not enough just to look at, and, and it sounds like. You've got a good sense of that, so I'll leave that, I'll leave it in your good hands. But it's more than just the A one district that's going to create pressures. Um, and, and the inventory of what could be needs to be considered village-wide, not just the A one district, in my opinion. Thank you.
I'm just.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Other speakers?
I'm Joanne Carroll, on which, do you need to address to?
Yes, we do. We know where you live.
I know, one thirty-nine Ashton. I have a few questions as to what the moratorium will affect. And I, I have a few things I want to ask first. Do we still have section eight housing in the village?
We have some people, uh, and not very many, who have section eight vouchers.
Okay.
They were very, very difficult to get in recent years, and so. As people moved on or passed away, the number of section eight vouchers we've had has declined significantly.
Okay.
There is some possibility that more might be available, especially for example, at our senior center.
Well, we still have, um, section eight housing. We have multiple housing, we have condos, we have co-ops, we have single-family homes. Do we still have shared homes?
So, you, you mean like, like supportive?
Like accessory apartments within a home.
So we do, and obviously we have some legal ones and some that have not been.
Yeah, okay. I'm, I'm just trying to get a idea of what do we have now?
Mm-hmm.
And are we missing something we should have and don't? And my question then comes to the moratorium. And after it happens, is this only going to affect new building? Or will it affect the conversion of already existing pieces of property that can be converted?
It would affect the conversion of property of greater than four thousand square feet. And the reason we said four thousand square feet was so that, for example, a site like the pharmacy. If it were proposed to be reoccupied by some different use, wouldn't get captured by.
What, what about if someone who owned the strip of Bedford Road between Memorial Plaza and Cooley Street? Decided to redesign and add housing?
That would absolutely be captured by the moratorium.
Okay.
Now, let me just say one thing about a project like that.
Yeah.
One of the impediments that have always existed. Is that our zoning requires if you develop new housing, you have to provide onsite parking or gain a variance for it. And so lots of sites, for example, Olive Wheeler, don't have the option to create onsite parking.
And, and then my final question is, um. I, I would just like to put my two cents in. I think zoning is one thing. And, and there's all sorts of changes that happen over time as far as zoning. And I was teasing someone before, we used to have a discotheque in town. And I don't think that would go over today, mostly because disco is dead. But, and that's the reason it's no longer here. But things change and buildings' use has changed over time.
No doubt.
Which is going to happen. And my, that's fine. My concern has always been. The architectural design of what we will allow. And if we want to keep the feeling of a village, no matter how we change, because we will change over time, that's just the nature of things. Is I think we really have to give. More guts to the, uh, architectural review. And I think we need to really have a plan of what we want this village to look like, not just our village as a home. Because everybody has their individual taste and has one, but what does our downtown, what do we want it to be? And it can be all different sized buildings, it can be all different facades, it can be everything. But I, I would just hate to see everything become very generic. And I don't know if anybody, I'm sure many people did, read the New York Times, uh, real estate section. The front of it is, what city are you in? And it has to do with small cities, Seattle, whatever else, where everything is just the same. And you lose your flavor of community. And that's the one thing I would hate to see happen. No matter what happens as far as zoning. And I hope everybody will keep that in mind when they then allow building to happen again. What do we want this place to look like?
Okay, so thank you for that. And I, I can tell you two pieces of that are. Uh, under discussion, and one is, uh, BFJ, uh, has already been. Engaged to take a closer look at our Bedford Road overlay district. Uh, to try to think about the ways in which that code established all those years ago. Um, it could be sharpened up and do a better job of achieving the goal that it had to begin with. And I think part and parcel to that is also giving the Architectural Review Board, uh, which is now, the planning commission functions also with the R B. Uh, and has a couple of architects on it, which is one of the advantages, uh, that, that insulation offered. Uh, to give them both some, uh, clearer guidelines and some, uh, clearer authority.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other speakers? Anybody? I, uh, if there's no one else in the room, uh, we'll go to. Uh, folks who have raised their hand in the Zoom call, Jeff Gasparo. Can you speak, sir?
Uh, yes, can you hear me? Uh, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, I'm not sure if you can see me. My name is Jeff Gasparo. I'm the attorney of record. Uh, for the four, four, four Bedford Road project, which is tentatively called, uh, the landmark at four, four, four. Um, as you mentioned earlier, uh, we did submit a letter that really encapsulates. Uh, our position towards the moratorium. Um, one, one of the things about this project, as you know, and it's. Uh, directly diagonally across the street from where you're meeting tonight, it's a. A hundred and fifteen-year-old building, and the owners who own it now. And are seeking to do substantial investment in the property. Uh, it's a family that's owned the, the property for, uh, almost forty years. And, uh, as we lay out our project, I think, um, this project has a lot of potential. To contribute to the character of the downtown. It's an iconic, uh, building. And, uh, we would hate to see a moratorium, uh, forestall. Um, uh, really what we see is an opportunity. Uh, not just as the owners of the property, but an opportunity for the village to re-energize and revitalize. Um, a key, uh, key iconic property. Um, so we've asked, uh, you to, uh, if you are going to go forward with the moratorium. That you consider, uh, moving the effective date, we, we have been gauging in a good faith, uh, process. That predates, uh, November sixteenth. We had an informal presentation in front of the planning board in September. And, uh, we believe that we would be disproportionately impacted and inequitably impacted. Um, uh, if the moratorium was to, um, put the brakes on, uh. Revitalizing and restoring, uh, to life, uh, this iconic property in the village. So. Uh, the rest of my comments are, would be encapsulated in the letter that, uh, I sent to the board trustees. I, in December, um, but, uh, we wanted to have our position heard at the hearing as well.
Thank you for that, sir. Uh, we have your letter. It's part of the record. The entire board has seen it and we understand your position, which. Was, uh, very clearly presented.
Thank you.
Helen Muir, you had your hand up.
Hello. Helen Muir, three Hayes Hill Road. Um, I'm just going to say briefly that I. I support the comments that Jonathan Cunningham made about extending or expanding the moratorium. To be village-wide, which I think would be more equitable than just picking one area. That's it.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, uh, any other speakers? I see no other hand raised in the Zoom window. Anybody else have? Welcome.
Hello, thank you. Arti Karlucci, twenty Roselle Avenue. Um, uh, listening to, uh, others who have spoken tonight. Uh, some really good points have been brought across, uh, development. Drains a lot with it, especially in terms of effects. Uh, what was mentioned before about emergency services and about, um, needs for more, uh, water. Sewer services and all those things. They're definitely going to have an impact, especially with the number of people that are coming in. The thing we see is traffic. I mean, um, I walk around. Village quite often and I know where to avoid at certain times, and unfortunately, some people can't do that. Um, uh, I think it was Carol was talking about the article in the Times. I saw that also, and I thought the building over. On Grant Street and I thought the building, um, right next to the post office too. They're very. They're kind of, the title of the article is any town USA. Pleasantville isn't any town, it's Pleasantville. And I've lived here for twenty-seven years and it has character, it has what the person who just spoke before about the bank, a hundred and fifteen years old, there's. There's something that could be said for that now, but then again, you have to move forward, you need changes and things like that. So. Um, I, I, I support the moratorium. I think village-wide might be more equitable as Helen just said. Uh, but the, the other thing that has been mentioned, and I, I walked here tonight, I live on Roselle, so it's about a half mile. Um, it's, as you go through the village, especially downtown, there's not a lot of greenery there. I mean, there's some grass and some bushes and a tree here and there. Um, I think one thing that might. Help a little, at least aesthetically, is something could be considered about putting in more, uh, green space. In, in terms of trees and because I see a lot of, I mean, goodness knows, there's a lot of tree services around here. I see trees coming down all the time, but what to replace them now? And that's, that's something to be considered. And the other thing. You know, this is twenty-first century and, um. Well, how about things like green roofs and things like that? I mean, you have all this space up there. I don't know what they really plan to do with it. But, um, you know, you could do things like green roofs, which would help the drainage and things like that. There's a lot of things that can be explored. And maybe that's some of the things that could be considered as part of the moratorium. Cause, um, you know, like I say, I, I love it here. My family's grown up here and, um. But, you know, when I see this big influx that will come, that concerns me and. If you have a plan, that'll go a long way. So I'm hoping a plan is found as you carry through with, I hope, with the moratorium. Thank you.
Okay, then I'd just comment on two pieces of the green space. One is in, in work session, we. Uh, discussed a proposal from our planners BFJ to assist us with a possible tree ordinance. Uh, which is, is a, a part of which would be to establish a plan to make sure that we are renewing our trees. Tree canopy and our tree inventory as trees die or are, or damaged or, or diseased. Um, so that piece is one piece of that. The other is, and, 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 uh, not everyone is in. Is of the same view of this, but the boards have been pursuing a public park project. At the, uh, at the Manville Road end of Memorial Plaza that would produce a, a big new. Uh, installation of trees as well as plaza space, seating space, et cetera. Um, and, uh, what we're talking about right now is. When the Manville Road project that's underway now continues in the spring and that elbow slip lane. Uh, as it's been called, exiting the commuter side of Memorial Plaza is closed. That will create a dead-end condition in that parking lot in which we continue to, uh. Uh, operate as a parking lot, but we're also looking at the question of what happens to the space no longer needed. And whether we can, uh, use that, uh, and, and build that out now in a way that would. Produce more green space, create a more honorific setting for the war monuments, which are currently in a traffic island. And, you know, potentially set up the community for a better sort of village green. So those are in play, but thank you for your comments for sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think I was intrigued by your green roof suggestion as well. Is that the kind of thing that could be considered in the context of the moratorium? I don't know who I'm asking if I'm asking. Uh, Frank perhaps? Is that something that, the kind of thing that could be factored into?
Well, I think, I think that that is something, and I'll defer to Jennifer here, but generally a moratorium. Is supposed to be solving a particular issue that's an emergency or something that's very critical to you in a short period of time. So I think that that focus that you have to the moratorium is a good one. To expand it into other areas, which by the way, I think are very, very good. Everything that was just said on green space, trees, green roofs. Uh, but those can be done separately from the moratorium. You can, you can update your zoning code on those. Um, and some of the things that were mentioned tonight too about the buildings. As, as many of the commentators read the New York Times real estate article, I did too, and. Um, those are things that can be addressed, um, in an architectural review board process and in. Uh, design guidelines. Uh, the mayor mentioned, we were looking at some of those, but they don't require a moratorium to do it. The moratorium is something that's an emergency and, uh, my, my, from what I've been told here. Um, there's, there has been a real perceived, at least perceived issue. On particularly downtown and the new incentives and the number of, of proposals that you have. So I think, I think you're wise to. Focus on that, not to the exclusion of these other things, but these other things can be done in the normal zoning, uh, update of your code. And it, they don't normally require a moratorium.
Yeah, but I mean, I think as we've seen tonight, at the very least, this provides an opportunity to generate thoughts about, you know. What we want for our village, you know, what the vision of our village is going forward, and then that can generate a lot of ideas that we can then. Um, you know, pursue going forward.
All right, anybody else? Other speakers? Tom again?
Yes, I'd just like to pick up the point that Joanne made. The buildings that have already been built are god awful. already been built are god awful ugly. I thought that the one next to the post office was the most horrendous looking building until they built the barracks compound down on Vanderbilt and Duke, and on Vanderbilt. The question that I would like to ask is, when a new building is going to be built, in particular, the bank across the street? Because I don't think it's if, it's probably going to be when. When that's built, I'm going back to several meetings ago, when they presented renderings of what the building was going to look at. The gentleman on Zoom said that the bank is an iconic building in the town, which is true. The additions that they are planning to add, the addendums to that building are ugly, flat roof buildings that do not fit in this town of colonial and historic homes. And my only point being, and I made this point before, is the architectural review board should do their homework. Look at the buildings in this town. Look at what is being proposed to be and what has already been built. And they do not fit in the architectural scheme of this village. And so I hope that you can get that across to the powers-to-be going forward to whatever and whomever and wherever new buildings are going to be built. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. All right. Other speakers? There are being none in the room. Any other speakers on Zoom? Jennifer, is there something? Oh, we have a speaker. Helen?
Just a quick question. Will there be another opportunity to speak about a different subject during the meeting?
Sure. We just need to get through this and then we will have public comment on whatever subject we want to raise.
Okay. Thank you.
Peter, we can't hear you on Zoom.
Why that is?
I, once everybody from the public is done, I do have some comments on this.
Can you hear me now?
Vaguely.
Stanis David, just very, it's like the, the volume was turned down.
Done. All right, Jennifer, I'll yell.
It's a little better now.
Yeah. When you both talk at once, you're both louder.
So Jennifer, is there anything you want to add to that? Or to clarify or correct anything any of us have said before we close this public hearing?
No, I do not have anything further.
Peter, I do have some comments before we close the hearing. If there's none, none from the public?
Nothing.
Okay. Can, can you guys hear me?
I can hear you, but.
I can hear you perfectly, David.
Okay. Eric, can you nod if you can hear me? Okay, I can see you. Okay. So I'm, I'm, I have to be honest, I'm very conflicted on this. I think I will most likely vote for it, but I have some significant concerns. And I just want to lay these out so they're on the record so everybody understands the issues. On the positive side, I do think that there's some things that this moratorium affords us that are potentially important. I don't know that we've had any indication that any of our physical infrastructure really is under threat. This building, the buildings that have gone up and any that would be contemplated are literally a couple of blocks away from the fire department and they concentrate, you know, where people will be living into just a few spaces. So I, I'll be shocked if that's a problem. If there's a problem, it's probably the long-term problem that Jonathan Cunningham has already mentioned, which is just, you know, can we have a volunteer fire department in an era where few people are volunteering? That's a separate question. So I'm not sure if that's really valid, but to the extent that there's anything that was missed the last two times the master plan was created, it's hard for me to imagine that responsible people creating a master plan would have created a plan there that we're in the first three buildings that, that, you know, that created the contemplated use of the plan. In other words, mixed-use development, that we would suddenly break our infrastructure. But if that is true, we certainly want to know it. So that's a potential valid reason for this moratorium. A better reason for me is, and I do think that this is important, that is included in the study, is that we need to think about whether our, the percentage of affordable housing that we're requiring, which is currently 10%, I believe, for these developments is adequate. There's certainly a national housing crisis and there's certainly a significant affordable housing crisis in our county. And frankly, creates a lot of crises for us for building owners, for people who run businesses, who are trying to hire people at, you know, sub-six, sub-six-figure wages. None of those people can afford to live nearby. So, you know, I think it's very, very important to, for us to look at that and potentially to increase the percentage of affordable housing required in future developments. I would like to ask that two things be added to the study, whether, whether or not, I don't think they should necessarily delay it, but I do think that this is an important time to look at them. One is the, the parking requirements for retail. I do think that during the pandemic, a lot of our assumptions about parking changed. And that the, if we want to, you know, part of the thing that upsets me about the people, the way that people have looking about development is they're assuming that the only way that they can save the village that they love in their greenhouse that has a nice yard, that's, you know, a half a mile from the center of the village, is by freezing development in the village. And I think it's actually quite the opposite. The only thing that will save it for them is having a denser village center that can support that for the rest of people outside the village. And I think that we do need to look at understanding what is actually going to be successful in terms of businesses in our village. We know that retail is a lot harder than it was. It may be that food service needs to be a higher percentage. It's not going to happen if we require, you know, even retail may be difficult with the current parking requirement. So I think that we really do need to look at that. And I would love to see comparables in any development that's been done around the U.S. and successful retail and successful businesses in small to medium-sized town centers. And the other thing is, I do think we should look, make a comprehensive look at energy standards that we're requiring for new buildings, whether that be green roofs, solar, et cetera. It certainly makes sense that, given the problems we've had with natural gas hookups with Con Ed, the overall energy consumption problems, that we would not be doing ourselves a favor if we didn't consider how those are adding to our energy security in the village. So that's on the positive side. On the negative side, I see a number of issues with adopting this. Overall, I'm not sure if we've really made the case that there is a crisis now. There's certainly an issue with traffic in the village, but, you know, looking at it carefully, I think more of it has to do with a part of the village that we're not even, you know, that we're not talking about in this, which is, and it has to do with the school and it has to do with the middle of the day. And that's not really connected to any of this. And in fact, if we want to add people to the village and we don't want to impact the traffic that we see near our schools, the best place to put them is on foot, you know, and at the center of town is just as good a place as any. The worst place to put them is where I live. The second problem is really now we have a majority of analysts suggesting that we're heading into a, a potential recession. And, you know, people tend to do the wrong thing at the end of a cycle, an economic cycle, where at the end of a very long expansionary cycle. And what we're doing is throwing the brakes on that, even if it's only for six months. And it could have economic effects. I'd like to remind some of you who are upset about what's happening in the village now, that if you were in the village in the late 90s, or around the time Jacob Burns was, the Rome Theater was converted to Jacob Burns in 2000, that that problem was worse. Broken windows and empty storefronts are not better than what we have today in the village. And that it's a very fine balance that we're holding. There is a national housing crisis. There is a local housing crisis. And I think in some ways, this really is a tone deaf move by us, considering what we're trying to do. Like our fantasy about being within 30 miles of Grand Central Station and having no responsibility for people's ability to live in this area is just that. And the state and controlling municipalities, home rule only exists to the extent that it's granted to us. And it can be taken away as easily. And the cumulative effect of a lot of small moves like this may very well be to hasten the end of our ability to control these things. So just realize that we will likely take this move, but all of us are going to be responsible if this ends up being one of the straws that breaks the camel's back in Albany. I think that, you know, as somebody who has spent years trying to understand what people think about things, what they say and what they don't say, this has been a very flawed process in terms of receiving comment. We have heard almost exclusively from homeowners, almost exclusively from people of, you know, the majority of race in, in, in our village. We know that a third of our village are renters and 28% are non-white. And we have not heard it from any of them. We asked, we also haven't heard from people who are busy or happy with what is going on now. So we're making a significant policy change that can have significant long-term effects based on hearing from a bunch of angry people, which is, you know, what local government does. But that can result in bad policy. So that's all I have. Like I said, I will most likely support this. I would not support continuing this ban beyond the six months. And at the point where we have a solid recommendation from our planners, if that's before six months, I would move to, to look at those and adopt those and end the moratorium. Thank you.
So let me just touch on, can you hear me, David, now? Let me just touch on two pieces of that, not seeking to rebut any of that, other than to correct a couple of things, one of which is, our current zoning does not have any parking requirement for retail at the moment, and hasn't for a very long time in an effort to promote retail downtown. So I think your intention was to suggest that perhaps the parking requirement for retail was chilling our opportunities. It's not a parking requirement that is, is doing that. Then the other point I wanted to make is, I don't think the moratorium is flawed policy because it isn't policy. What it is, is a pause to say, we need to coalesce within the board and within the community around a bunch of shared facts and a shared understanding of, of some things that are going on, and then find a way forward that makes sense. That way forward make, make sense, may comport with what people want or what any individual wants or doesn't. We're not taking policy. What we're doing here, proposing an opportunity to make policy.
Yeah. Well, respectfully, Mr. Mayor, I think that, you know, life is what happens while we're making other plans and policy is what happens while we're planning for the future.
Okay. Let me just read this from Michael Pepperd, who asked me to read this into the record. He can't be here. Dear Mayor Shearer, fellow trustees, members of the public, I wish I could be there tonight. To continue important discussions about development, I have a long scheduled and mandatory commitment tonight at my workplace. I write to express my support for the proposed moratorium. It will enable us to assess the impacts of development on our village infrastructure, services, vehicular traffic and pedestrian safety. It will also allow us more time to listen to the diverse opinions of our residents so we can make decisions based on sound democratic processes. Sincerely, Michael Pepperd. So that is the report from Michael. Any, any last comments, Jonathan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just want to respond a bit to David's. First of all, I, I've been at, I think most of these meetings, and I would say that for the most part, and I've been at meetings where there have been angry residents. And, and I would not characterize the interaction between the public and the board as a bunch of angry residents. Sure, there are a few that might be angry, but most are passionate because they've made huge investments in this community and they have very much invested in how it goes forward. And they want to say. And that's, that's, that's what you're hearing. You're not hearing angry residents. And, and if you are, I think you need to actually take a step back and try to understand what it is you are actually hearing. But one, I don't think it's angry residents. Two, maybe when you guys passed the, the, and I was part of, I was part of the audience of some of those, the, the zoning changes as part of the master plan study. Peter knows my stance on master plans. I think they're, they're basically out of date the minute you put them in place. So I don't have a lot of faith in master plans. I think they're good exercise reports to go through. I think you go through them with the understanding that you're going to have to adjust along the way. Because you can never fully understand what the implications of what you've just put in place are going to do. Moratoriums are a good way to do that. And I fully appreciate David's perspective that there may be some aspects to this that we're at the end of the cycle, whatever, that could have some implications. But, you know, my experience, both on the board and off the board, and in my professional life, is that most things endure six months. So, so I would say that this is a good move from that perspective. I would also say that, having sat in the meetings for the master plan, I don't think anybody envisioned that the village population would grow by potentially 10% in 18 months to two years. So I think that that is well beyond what most people probably would have expected from the change that we put in place. And that in and of itself, I think is a rationale for instituting a moratorium and studying some of these issues a little bit further. And I applaud the board's willingness to look at that. David's caveats are well considered. I don't agree with most of them, but I do think that beyond six months, they take on a bit more, they could take on a bit more importance. But I do believe that six months will give you guys the time needed to look at this. I wish you would do it over the entire village, because I do not think that will add that much to the, to the overall study. But again, I just wanted to say that we are a community that cares a lot about the community. You as board members know that because you're very much part of that. And we are not angry. We are passionate and we just want to have a say in the way our community evolves. So thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. All right. Any other speakers?
I feel like I should say something. I'll try to make it short. So I'm in favor of the moratorium. I share a little bit of David's angst in the sense that these matters are very complicated, right? There's so many different things to balance out and, and there's a bit of anxiety in that. I've been, you know, I'm, I'm running for reelection. Paul and I have been knocking on doors. So I've been talking to a lot of people. And the sense that I get from speaking to not everybody, but to a number of people, is that there's a lot happening in a short period of time and that it feels overwhelming. And so I think in, if I can put it in sort of more general and less technical terms, part of the justification of the moratorium is just this general feeling that like we need a pause in order to kind of take a look at everything and sort of examine the situation overall. And, you know, the speed with, there's been a lot of talk about the master plan, but the speed with which things are happening are mostly, well, you can correct me, Peter, if I'm wrong, because you've been involved with this for longer. It's not strictly because of well, you can correct me, Peter, if I'm wrong, because you've been involved with this for longer. It it's not strictly because of the master plan. There are a lot of other forces at play, um you know, sh- housing shortages uh and an interest in people moving out of the suburbs, people out of the city. Um and you know, the the pressure to work in the city, nothing is great. There's all kinds of things going on that have made these changes happen in in a very short period of time. Um and and I think we will, you know, with the help of GBFJ, give this as much careful consideration as we can. Um and you know, I will just close by saying there are all of these sort of delicate uh balancing acts that have to be performed. And just to give you an example, um I recently learned that Croton has built some housing that is designed to be more uh modest income housing in order to house people that will participate in their local uh firefighting effort. Um because one of the things that they found is that the the people who will volunteer in the local fire department are sometimes being priced out of these communities. So it's, that's a good example to me of the kind of connections that sometimes exist between two pieces of this complex puzzle that we might not necessarily think of. So that's the kind of thing that I hope that we'll be thinking about as part of this um larger discussion and um I thank all of you for for coming and and giving us your two cents on the issue.
All right. Any other speakers?
I'll just say that um you know, to our neighbors, to residents of Pleasantville, we hear you. We hear your concerns. Um I think this is a decision that I I support. I believe that we'll be able to get a lot more answers, be able to make a lot, a lot better decisions for everyone as a whole. I think that hopefully the our neighbors are able to notice that and we're trying. We're not just going forward. You came, you spoke, we listened. And we're going to do our best to to look into every possible um effect that this can have. And then together we'll continue. We will evaluate this again when six months are up. See, we need more time to see what other avenues we can explore. And I think try to be, you know, I I guess the most efficient and and fair for everyone, that you know, there is a lot of change happening and there are a lot of things going on. But it doesn't mean that we have to lose a lot of what we love about Pleasantville. So I think a lot of, a lot of great ideas will come up through all this, this process. Um I think it was very important. I think there's so so many more things that we're going to need to address. Um it's just different ways. Like I think, I do think the traffic is a really big problem. Um I do think that it's not just development that's happening. I think it's it's, you know, I've I've said this publicly nowadays. Um I don't know if it's in school busing is something that needs to be reevaluated again. I don't know if if finding out how we can get people to walk more into town. We're we know, we're not utilizing also the parking lots that we have. People drive right into the village and just park right here, knowing that we have Rebecca Lane Lot that's always empty on the weekends. And nobody, you know, it's, I remember I used to walk everywhere when I was a kid growing up. We walked. I lived up in the old village and we would walk all the time and just we don't anymore in general. So how do we encourage that, you know? And that's when working with other groups, like we have, you know, the pedestrian committee that that trying to figure out how we can make this village more of a walking village and make it safe. But you know, you're not gonna get, you're not gonna get kids walking from like, let's say up in Locust, all the way up there, walking through where there's no sidewalks. And there's so many things that are like that. There things that I think that we have to look at, what can we solve? And what kind of things will we have to kind of accept? And and try to limit in a way that it doesn't affect us so much. So I appreciate everyone's input on this and, you know, we look forward to being able to move in a positive direction. So I definitely support the moratorium.
All right. Any other speakers? All right. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Still.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. David, were you an aye? He was, he went. Um so uh let me suggest that we've got Frank and and Jennifer online here and a bunch of folks here. Uh interested in our resolution to consider adopting this. I'm going to suggest that we change our sequence in the agenda. We have another brief public hearing on a matter of of likely no concern to the folks in the room. So let me just uh go out of order and ask uh Paul to uh move resolution number ten.
So read the holding.
I think you need to read.
Okay, yeah. Okay, uh whereas on December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, the Board of Trustees introduced a proposed local law enacting a temporary moratorium on new land use applications for site plan approval, special use permit approval, subdivision approval, variance relief, and the building permits pertaining to the properties located in the central business A one district, including the central business A one subarea in the village of Pleasantville. And whereas the Board of Trustees believes that a moratorium is necessary to preserve the status quo while it assesses whether changes are warranted in the central business A one district, including the central business A one subarea, to ensure that the current scope of development permitted under the zoning code is consistent with the comprehensive plan appropriate and can be supported by the village's existing infrastructure. And whereas maintaining the status quo will protect the public interest and welfare, ensure consistency with new zoning requirements, promote community planning values by regulating land development based on carefully considered plan and prevent potential applicants from securing approvals before new conditions and requirements are established. And whereas pursuant to the terms of the local law, the term of the moratorium will be for a period of six months following the date on which the local law is filed with the Secretary of State. And whereas pursuant to the terms of the local law, during the moratorium, the building inspector, planning commission, and zoning board of appeals will be precluded from issuing any determination under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, or issue any final determination on application for a building permit, variance, special use permit, site plan, and or subdivision application filed on or after November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two for property in the central business A one zoning district, unless such application falls within one or more exemptions set forth in the local law. And whereas pursuant to the terms of the local law, applicants who would otherwise be subject to moratorium may seek a hardship exemption in the Village of Board of Trustees. And whereas the adoption of the moratorium is a type-two action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and accordingly, no further environmental review is required. And whereas the moratorium was referred to the Westchester County Planning Board and a response was received dated January third, twenty twenty-three. And whereas the moratorium was referred to the Village of Pleasantville Planning Commission, it was discussed at its meeting on January eleventh, twenty twenty-three, and their response was received dated January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. And whereas the Board of Trustees held a duly noticed public hearing on the moratorium on January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, at which times all those wishing to comment on the moratorium had an opportunity to be heard, and the public hearing was closed on January twenty twenty-three. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby adopts the moratorium and directs the village clerk to transmit a copy of this resolution and the adopted local law to the Westchester County Planning Board. Be a further resolved that the village clerk shall immediately file within the local law with the Secretary of State of the State of New York. Attached to this um attached to this documents are the intra-local law, the memo of B J F planning, referral comments from the Westchester County Planning, and referral comments from the Village Planning Commission.
Is there a second?
I just want to say it's the public hearing was closed on January twenty-third, not twenty-fourth.
Right.
January, yes.
Uh is there a second?
Second.
Let's have a roll call vote. Paul.
Aye.
Nicole.
Aye.
David.
Aye.
Peter. Frank and Jennifer, thank you. Uh we will review from this meeting bonded. Um. Back to the regular meeting. Uh other men.
We can't hear anything again. Sorry.
We're asking for public comment on any matter. Helen wanted to say something. I don't know if there's anyone here in person who also wants to speak.
Helen? Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me? When I speak, I can't hear you. There's obviously a disconnect between the Zoom mics and the in. So um I'm following up with the email I sent earlier today uh with regards to uh development planned outside of Pleasantville in Mount Pleasant. Uh not too far from us, uh next to Cantico, uh Pecanto Lake is a favorite place of mine. As it happens, uh it's a very nice wilderness area and uh developers planning to put up thirty-one homes on about thirty-one acres. And a um draft environmental impact statement was submitted to the Mount Pleasant Board, who will would be renew uh the planning board, who would be reviewing that fairly recently, I think December nineteenth. And a lot of people have been asking for um longer for the planning board in Mount Pleasant and maybe the town board and residents to be able to read that statement and respond to it and ask questions. And it's a very long statement. It's almost four hundred pages long with a hundred pages uh of a tender seen. So I'm just um asking the village board if they would either issue a statement in support of extending the time period to review that environmental impact statement or any other letter of support to um just to give everybody a chance to weigh in on the environmental impact of this development. Uh and part of the logic for this is that there's been a fair amount of holiday in between, including uh through December and into January. So um there's not been much time for people to work on it.
Um. Are you? Can you hear us now, Helen?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for you guys moving that closer. That apparently is all in the room. So um y- you sent an email to that effect, as did a couple of other people today. And uh I mean, the first thing I would say is I would wholeheartedly encourage anyone who has uh these concerns to be forwarding them to the Town of Mount Pleasant Planning Board. Um I I will say, having nothing to do with the matter at hand, uh the village of Pleasantville is not a an involved agency. And there is a longstanding uh uh collegial uh practice of as a, as an elected body uh staying within our lane and not uh engaging the responsibilities of somebody else's town board. So I'm not sure where that lands in this situation. Clearly, the Pecanico Lake is a regional resource and one that's important to lots of folks in Pleasantville. Um and obviously, the village of Pleasantville is within the Town of Mount Pleasant. Uh and we're all Mount Pleasant residents. Uh so uh a- as a board, I think we should e- explore that question. Um uh whether we ought as a board to take a position. Um we're in a rather different circumstance, for example, than the Briar Cliff uh board, which is an involved agency uh uh as part of the DEIS process. So that said, I I wholeheartedly encourage you and everybody else and and perhaps even in the context of your role as Chair of the CAC to express exactly the opinion you just described to the Town of Mount Pleasant Planning Commission. Do you know whether they have uh had any uh comment about the idea of extending the comment period?
I I don't know. Um but I would say that the there is a bit of an urgency here because the uh uh public uh review of it is on February the second, which is before the next Pleasantville Village Board meeting. And also, um I have written to the planning board in Mount Pleasant. Uh and I have made my uh opinions known there. And I feel it is a matter of just supporting um uh large development issues in our community as a whole. Believe that um Malcolm Netburn is in the room. Um
He is, I assume.
He might be able to take some of those questions. He's much closer to the project.
Are you going to take that bait, Mr. Nippon?
May I?
Welcome. Enter and sign in, please.
So I'd like to say that my residence is three thirty Bedford Road because we lived there for thirty-two years.
But you can't say it.
And I served under three of these mayors. I didn't have the honor to serve under Peter. Um and uh and and I was also the chairman of the Bedford Road Study Group that eventually ended up in the Special Character Overland District and I think just parenthetically, your suggestion of thirty-five or thirty-seven years later, we did the best we could in what was a different time that it probably could use some refreshing as the so uh a lot of mixed emotions, not mixed emotions, a lot of wonderful emotions.
Yeah. All right, I'm, could you give us your address?
My address is sixty-four Farm Road in Briar Cliff Manor. Uh parenthetically, I guess it's my training here in Pleasantville as both a trustee as well as on the planning board that I was appointed chairman of the Briar Cliff Planning Board, but I'm not here in that capacity tonight. I'm just here as a member of a volunteer organization called Safe Mechanical Lake and and uh so Peter, the question, you know, I I realize, I I appreciate the swing lanes. Um we're not asking the uh the the board to take a position, obviously, that would be inappropriate. What we're saying is that as the crow flies, we're probably about five miles from Mechanical Lake, where we've lived in the same general district that managed to take off the boundaries where it is, it is a unique part of Midwestchester. There were close to a hundred people who signed a petition to um uh Pleasantville residents who signed the petition uh in support of um questioning the the uh or or looking at the risks that this development imposes. You know, not just in Mount Pleasant, not just in Briar Cliff, not just in Hossening, you know, but equally in in Pleasantville because um i- that is an area that as you, to anybody who's not been there, it's one of really one of the unique actually areas in this in our community. You would think it's part of the Rockefeller State Park if you didn't know better. It is really Mechanical Lake. It's a, the 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 lake, it actually is a secondary. It was a reservoir originally. It's a secondary use of water. It flows directly into the the uh Hudson River, um which impacts all of us because we're we're kind of part of that large Hudson River area. So we're uh we're just asking um we're not really, this, you know, Briar Cliff is actually not, there there is no difference between kind of the standing of Briar Cliff and Pleasantville on this.
The reason I said that is Briar Cliff is listed as a, as a, as an involved agency, I think partly in regard to fire district stuff.
Just, yeah, it it maybe.
In the E I F, uh it's listed.
Maybe in terms of sewage, you know, sewage, you know, hookups.
Right.
But that's, that's its limit. But I I'm not.
The entire zone in question is in.
Entire zone is in Mechanical. And one time it wasn't, but they sold off, the property owner sold off and uh six acres of originally a forty-two acre property that was in the village of Briar Cliff. They sold it off and then they come up with this development of uh of what is really a unique spot, sort of adjacent to the county park, enjoyed by all of us, many of us. Um, you know, one of the key flyways for birds, steep slopes throughout it, a creek that runs in it. So we're, we're really just uh asking with no recrimination for the Town of Mount Pleasant, but this thing was brought forward on December nineteenth. I was living from California, just as an example for the holidays. So we're a good deal of people focusing on Christmas holiday. They 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 accepted a document that is actually closer to a thousand pages. We don't think they should have accepted that document because it did not meet the requirements for what they were supposed to cover. And we're just asking really, as you might find, the friends of the court, you know, not a statement on whether or not we should go through or not. This should go through or not, but on making sure that the public has enough time to absorb, you know, the. The very complicated. Plans that are in place and the risks to our environment to. You know, there's six acres of forest that are going to be taken down and maybe seven hundred trees that are going to come down. You know, whether you think that impacts Pleasantville in terms of the general health and welfare of our citizens. It does to the aggregate. It may not do it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, don't get me wrong.
We're asking you to stretch a little bit in a fairly benign note to. Like you say, we are part of the town and we're part of the town here in Pleasantville, just to say, just want to make sure that is a. That the time is provided for there to be full input by the broader and community of Mount Pleasant. To address the issues that have been raised.
So two things, I guess, no one has yet heard anything from the Mount Pleasant Planning Commission about. Whether they're open to an extension or not. There's been, they haven't outlined on that. Is that?
They have not.
Yeah. So the other thing is, I mentioned this to County Executive today. And he he said that, you know, the county remains willing to talk. But there was no clarity on whether there was even an opening there and whether the. The developer was interested in the conversation and all of the above. Do you have any sense of any of that?
You know, there's a lot of peculiarities with this in terms of the inexpensive price that they bought forty acres for two point four million dollars. Somebody could like figure that out. The problem is, is, you know, whether or not the county is interested. The question is whether the developer. Who is planning to put on very expensive housing there, you know, probably sees profits in the ten to eighteen million dollar range. And as opposed to like somebody saying, we would pay five million dollars, you know, so you make two and a half million dollars on what your original purchase was. So. I would say that, you know, I think the question's here is just. The developer needs to take into account the. Risks to the water, to the Rockefeller State Park. And not inconsequently to the Hudson River based on what that level of development on that property with its very steep slopes. Part of it is conservation easement anyway. They're planning on building right up to the conservation line. And and I think the county. Appreciates that, appreciates the risk it has to the county park. The question is whether they are going to be willing to look at what potential loss profits there are. As opposed to fair value for what the the current owner bought that property for.
So. Of course, part of the question is the calculus of whether. The extent of the development they propose would be approved, correct? Or something.
That's correct. Right now, what they bargained is since it's thirty-three acres, after they sold off. Some acres that they can put up thirty-three homes because it's one acre zoning. But about half of that property is actually steep slopes that can't be built on. So but they're saying that it's still entitled to the. The underlying zoning for the whole property. So, you know, whether or not there is an eventual solution is a less intense use. Of the land, which would impose less risk on the environment, on the lake, on the on the. On the state park and preserve is something that we want to figure out. And.
And to your knowledge, the developer has not commented on the possibility of selling. All or part of this to the county to expand the park.
By not to my knowledge.
All right. So I thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
We will. Look into this and certainly have some conversations and this decide. Whether it feels appropriate for us to send a letter as a board or potentially as individuals. But as I said to Helen. I encourage every Pleasantville resident who are concerned to express this very same goal. At the moment, it's a rather narrow focused goal. Extend the period of review.
Okay, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Any other comments from anybody on any subject? All right, back we go to our. Second and much more modest public hearing. Is there a motion to open a public hearing concerning introductory local law one of two thousand twenty-three to amend chapter one seventy-three, article seven, section sixty. Of the code of the village of Pleasantville concerning parking on Washington Avenue at Hildreth Place. So moved. Is there a second?
Okay.
Mr. Eric.
Okay, so the Department of Public Works received complaint about visibility at the intersection of Hildreth Place and Washington Avenue. Due to cars parked in close proximity to the intersection, it's hard to pull out from Washington Avenue. So. The Superintendent Public Works went out and evaluated the situation, came up with recommendation to update parking restrictions in the area. So this local law proposes to prohibit parking on Washington Avenue from Hildreth Place south for thirty feet. And then north for thirty-eight feet. And that this is what the local law would enact.
Pretty straightforward. Are there any comments from the board on this subject? We had a presentation of this in work session from Anthony last meeting. Comments of any sort from a member of the public? There being none, is there a motion to close the public here?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, that was easy. Let me just make a couple, a couple of quick announcements. One is I wanted to thank. The Interfaith clergy association, which organized the Martin Luther King Day service, which was hosted by St. John's. On Sunnyside Avenue on Monday for Martin Luther King Day, but included. The synagogue and several churches, the Upper Westchester Muslim Society, and Nicole was there. A really, really nice service and an opportunity to. Reach across various cultures to express shared goals. So. Thank you a lot to all those folks who got that organized and we very much appreciate everybody who was able to come. As we have announced in the past, there's a village election, two trustee positions and the village justice. That election date is on March twenty-one. If anyone who's interested in running can get information at the County Board of Elections website. If you search on Westchester County Board of Elections, you come to citizen participation that da, 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 da. I believe, but you should confirm that the deadline for filing a nominating petition is in mid-February. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention, as you already know, that. Covid continues to make its way around our realm, as does flu and RSV. I am happy to report that this week's numbers as reported by the county today. Look somewhat better than they did last week. That's a bit of an up and down process, but I can also report that a whole lot of people are sick and it's just. A painful process that continues to drag out. So as you well know, immunizations are available now very widely at most pharmacies. And we encourage everyone to be fully vaccinated and adjust to be cautious so as to try to keep everybody. As healthy as they can be in these cloistered winter months when everybody's close to one another. Anybody else have announcements to make of any kind?
Oh, Peter, sorry. Just to let the public know, we interviewed seven candidates for the village board. There were seven great.
David?
Yeah.
You said.
Sorry, we just wanted to say library board because you said village board.
Yeah, sorry. The village interviewed seven candidates for the Mount Pleasant Public Library Board. I thought you were saying that I was muted and I'm like, I don't see it's muted here. And there are seven excellent candidates. We are in the process of discussing the interviews and will hope to have a new. Public Library Board member soon. And we also hope that we can get all of these people involved in the village one way or the other.
Thank you for that, David. David and I conducted these seven interviews and I can say I've been in this. Public realm for a good long time, and I do not believe we have ever had second candidates for one of these positions. So. That was really, really great news. And every one of them was was a great candidate each in their own way. So thank you for all of those people. All right, let's return to the resolutions. I'll share my screen. We already did resolution ten. Nicole, resolution eleven. Let me just get to the screen sharing here.
I've got it.
Go ahead. I'll share the screen when I get there.
Whereas the village board of trustees has proposed introductory local law one of two thousand twenty-two to amend chapter one seventy-three, article seven, section sixty of the code of the village of Pleasantville entitled Schedule. Schedule twelve, parking prohibited at all times, to prohibit parking on the west side of Washington Avenue. From Hildreth Place south for thirty feet and from Hildreth Place north for thirty-eight feet. Whereas a public hearing was held in close on Monday, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, concerning introductory local law one of two thousand twenty-three to prohibit parking at the intersection of Washington Avenue and Hildreth Place. Now therefore be it resolved that the village board trustees hereby adopts introductory local law one of two thousand twenty-three, which shall become local law two of two thousand twenty-three upon its passage.
Is there a second? Second. Comments or questions? This is a follow up to our thoroughly exciting and very detailed hearing of a moment ago. All in favor?
Aye.
I approve David number twelve.
Resolve the board of trustees hereby approves the minutes of the regular meeting held on January ninth, twenty twenty-three, which are attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections to the minute? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Back to you, Paul, number thirteen.
Resolve the board of trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for the fiscal year of two thousand twenty-three as listed below. From the general fund, sixty thousand five hundred sixty-nine and seventy-four cents. The account is A ninety ten point eight zero zero. ERS retirement to account A three one two point one zero one for lease overtime. Then forty thousand dollars from account A one nine nine zero point four zero zero contingency to A nine nine five zero point nine oh one transferred to capital new. D W P dump truck for a total of one hundred thousand five sixty-nine and seventy-four cents. Appropriate fund balance, general fund. Two hundred fifty thousand from account A nine nine five zero point nine oh one transferred to capital for the discovery of new DPW dump truck capital project. And increased revenue and expense capital fund of thirteen thousand nine hundred thirty-eight and eighty-two cents. Revenue H O twelve point five four one one sidewalk program, fifty fifty program to the expense account of H. Five four one zero point two oh one dash two three four nine zero capital sidewalk project for a total of thirteen thousand nine thirty-eight and eighty-two cents.
Is there a second?
Okay.
So the middle part of that is with the subject of a work session discussion with Anthony Carr, our DPW superintendent, about. Replacing a twenty-two-year-old heavy dump truck that is, among other things, central to our common insulting.
That's right. The cost of the dump trucks, about two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. So that's why we're using that two fifty and then the forty from contingency. If we place the order now, we're looking at next year to get delivery. So.
Yeah, hey, you're not, you don't buy them off a lot.
No. And then the sixty thousand in retirement, retirement came in under budget. So we have. A surplus there that we're moving to lease overtime because we'll eventually be over there with medical needs and recent research confidence.
All right, comments, questions, all in favor?
Thanks.
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution fourteen, Nicole.
Resolve that the board of trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three for fiscal year ending in two thousand twenty-three covering check numbers. One zero six, one six five to one zero six, two seven two from the general fund, two hundred and ninety thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty cents. In the water fund, twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and twenty-three cents. From the capital fund, thirty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents. From the revenues fund. Twenty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty cents for a total of three hundred and seventy-five thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. And the payment of claims is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions on the payment of claim? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Fifteen, David.
Be resolved by the board of trustees of the village of Pleasantville, Westchester, New York. The village is follows section one. The village is hereby authorized to undertake construction, equipping. Of a swimming pool at Nantahagan Park, including any original furnishes, furnishings, equipment, machinery, or apparatus required in connection therewith. At an estimated maximum cost of five million dollars to issue not to exceed five million dollars in serial bonds pursuant to the provisions of local finance law. To finance the estimated cost of the aforementioned class of objects and purposes. Section two, the plan for financing of such maximum estimated cost shall be by the issuance of not to exceed five million dollars in serial bonds to the bonds. Of the village which are hereby authorized to be issued pursuant to this resolution. Section three. Hereby term period of probable usefulness for the afford said specific object or purpose is twenty years pursuant to paragraph sixty-one of section eleven point oh oh A. Local finance law, the maximum maturity of the bond shall be in excess of five years. Section four, pursuant to section one oh oh. D nine of local finance law, current funds are not required to be provided prior to issuance of bonds or any bond anticipation notes issued in anticipation of the issue. In some bonds. Section five, temporary use of available funds of the village not immediately required for the purpose or purposes for which they were. For which the same were borrowed, raised, or otherwise created is hereby authorized pursuant to section. One sixty-five point ten of the local finance law for the capital purposes described in section one of this resolution. Section six. The bonds and any bond anticipation notes issued in anticipation of the bond shall contain the recital of validity prescribed by section fifty-two point oh of the local finance law on the bonds and any bond anticipation. Anticipation notes issued in anticipation of the bonds shall be general obligations the village payable as spoke principal and interest by general tax upon all real property. Property within the village without legal or constitutional limitation as to rate or amount. The faith and credit of the village are hereby irrevocably pledged to the punctual payment of the principal and interest on the bonds. And any bond anticipation notes issued in anticipation of the bonds and provision shall be made annually in the budget of the village by appropriation for A, the amortization and redemption of the bonds. And bond anticipation notes to mature in such a year and B, the payment or of interest to be due and payable in such a year. Section seven, subject to the provisions of this resolution of the local finance law and pursuant to the provisions of the sections twenty-one, thirty, fifty, fifty-six, and sixty-three. Inclusive the local finance law, the power to authorize the issuance of and sell bond anticipation notes in anticipation. Of the issuance and sale of the bonds hereby herein authorized, including renewals on such notes and the power to prescribe the terms, forms, and contents of the bonds. And any bond anticipation notes and the power to sell and deliver the bonds and any bond anticipation notes issued in. To anticipation of the issuance of the bonds and the power to issue bonds, providing for the level or substantially level or declining annual debt service is hereby delegated to the village treasurer. The chief fiscal officer of the village. Section eight, the reasonably expected source of funds to be used to. Yes?
I think we could finish that section and say, as further stated in the record, and save your.
Voice.
You've got peace here.
As further stated in the record, and then what do I go to fifteen or?
Sections nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. I want to read fifteen.
Okay, section fifteen. This resolution is adopted subject to permissive referendum in accordance with section thirty-six of the local finance law. The resolution shall take effect thirty days after its adoption or if a petition is filed pursuant to article five A of the village law upon the affirmative vote. Of a majority of the qualified electors of the village voting on the referendum.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All right, so the resolution in place is, as David read and further stated in the record. The number of five million is. An attempt to make sure that we have enough bonding authority to achieve what needs to be achieved. It is our sincere hope, without any certainty, that it won't cost that much. Fair to say, Eric?
Yeah, we have cost estimates as recent as this summer that shows it being four point eight million. So this provides some breathing room.
And we're hoping that those numbers turn out to be, uh, lower than that because I can tell you that the whole project has, uh, like many things in life, skyrocketed in cost since we first began the discussion, so. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
Is that what you guys were waiting for?
You guys are, are like serious. Thank you for your civic commitment. Back to you, Paul, number sixteen.
Resolve that the board of trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to advertise for a bid for two thousand two thousand twenty-three dash two for tree removal, trimming, and stump grinding services.
Is there a second?
Second.
Straightforward, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Seventeen, Nicole.
Resolve that the board of trustees in support of the Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department's annual parade on Friday, June second, twenty-twenty-three. That'll be fun. Authorizes that no parking signs be posted with restrictions in effect for Friday, June second, twenty-twenty-three from four P M. to nine P M. at the following locations.
I think you can say as.
As further stated in the record. Further resolve that the board of trustees hereby authorizes the league chief to tow all vehicles violating this temporary parking restriction and to cancel the event due to adverse weather conditions or safety concerns. And further resolve, the Pleasantville Fire District shall provide proof of insurance for the event and therefore be it resolved, the board of trustees hereby approves the parade permit application from the Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department to conduct a parade on Friday, June second, twenty-twenty-three.
Is there a second? Say it. Mark your calendars. Uh, one of the great days of the year in Pleasantville, Friday, June two, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Back to you, David, eighteen. Blessedly short, you deserve one.
Resolve that board of trustees hereby authorizes the village of Pleasantville to hold tax grievance night on February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three from five P M. until nine P M. at Eighty Wheeler Avenue, second floor, Pleasantville, New York, one-oh-five-seven-zero.
Is there a second?
Second.
So that date is fixed by New York State. If you are seeking to grieve your property taxes, you do not have to appear, uh, in person, but you do have to file the requisite paperwork with the assessor, uh, on or before February twenty-one at nine P M. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. You, Paul, nineteen.
Whereas on December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, the board of trustees approved the closure of the Holy Innocence Parking Lot on May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three for the purpose of special parish event. Now therefore be resolved, the board of trustees hereby approves the request from Holy Innocence Parish to hold a block party and thereby close Tompkins Avenue on Sunday, May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three from seven A M. to five P M.
Is there a second?
Okay.
So this is, uh, they're expanding their block party to include the road.
Yeah, then they've done this in the past.
No, well, more power to them, uh, just as we are pleased to close the roads for neighborhood parties. Pleased to do it for Holy Innocence. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion. Twenty, Nicole.
Resolve that the board of trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to enter into an agreement with the town of Mount Pleasant for the purpose of cooperative bidding for highway construction materials.
Is there a second?
Second.
Openation of a longstanding shared service. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Twenty-one, David.
Resolve the board of trustees hereby accepts the resignation of Linda Shankman as a mem- member of the public arts committee.
Is there a second? Okay, Linda, the longstanding resident of Pleasantville, who has actually moved out of Pleasantville. Uh, painfully, I, uh, am sorry to see her go, but deeply appreciate that many things she has done for Pleasantville for so many years and I have no doubt she'll remain involved in various ways, uh, just not as a member of the public arts committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Back. Paul, number twenty-two.
Resolve that the board of trustees hereby authorizes the appointment of Jim Coleman to the public arts committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jim is an architect and, uh, uh, quickly Rose is a good candidate to replace Linda on the public arts committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion. Twenty-three, Nicole.
Resolve that the board of trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to apply for the clean energy communities program through the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, NISERTA, in the amount of five thousand dollars for the purposes of a climate smart incentive program.
Is there a second? There.
This is the latest one that we have assembled, yeah.
This is the continuation of the opportunity to provide rebates for converted electric?
No, this is, um, this is a new grant that we're, it's due soon. We, we're working on. So we're, um, we're pros- proposing to break up the grant into different buckets. Um, one would be a kind of, uh, public education plan to promote some of the programs that we're doing. Uh, one would be potentially working with, um, the businesses downtown in an, uh, rebate program for L E D lights to help them convert and also possibly working to, there's thought of having like a, some kind of sticker where businesses can have, um, climate smart, be like a climate smart approved business.
That's great.
Uh, and what's, oh, and then also to purchase some electric landscaping equipment for the Parks Department.
Great.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. David, twenty-four. You're getting the long ones today.
I know. Where's the following bids received and reviewed by Anthony Carr, superintendent of public works, in December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two? In response to bid twenty-twenty-two dash six for sidewalk and curb improvements, um, Cornerstone Restoration Group Corp., one hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred, Burton Hills Contracting Corp., one hundred and fifty-five thousand, Morano Brothers Corp., two hundred and fifty-five thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars, Western, Westchester Hills Landscaping, Inc., one hundred and seventy thousand ninety-two dollars, Palladino Concrete Creations Corp., two hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred dollars, Contact Construction Corp., one hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars, Peter Landy, Inc., one hundred and twenty thousand three hundred dollars, CMC Contractors, Inc., eighty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars, Withland Manor LLC, one hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. And whereas in January ninth, two thousand twenty-three, the board of trustees adopted a resolution to award bid twenty-twenty-two dash six for sidewalk and curb improvements to CMC Contractors, Inc. through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. And whereas the village issued a notice of award to CMC Contractors, Inc. on December thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, and whereas the notice of award required CMC Contractors, Inc. to execute the contract and comply with conditions listed within ten days of the notice of award, no later than January ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Failure or neglect to do so shall cons- do so shall constitute a break of the agreement affected by the acceptance of the bid. And whereas the village followed up with CMC Contractors, Inc. on January tenth and January eleventh concerning the execution of contractor. And whereas CMC Contractors, Inc. has failed to submit the required documentation to the village in accordance with the notice of award. And whereas the village would like to move forward with the sidewalk and curb improvement on the project as soon as possible. Now therefore be resolved, board of trustee- trustees hereby finds that CMC Contractor, Inc. is not a responsible bidder as it has failed to execute the contract in accordance with the notice of award despite follow-up from the village. Be it further resolved, the village hereby awards bid twenty-two, twenty-two dash six for sidewalk and curb improvements to the second lowest responsible bidder, Peter Landy, Inc., for a hundred and twenty thousand thirty dollars, three hundred dollars. Be it further resolved, board of trustees hereby authorizes and empowers the superintendent of public works to take all actions necessary to implement the purpose of this resolution memo attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Self-explanatory.
That's right.
Isn't this the one where we said when it, when we did it, how did they do it this cheap?
Yeah, yeah, they were, uh, they were the low bidder. They were in communication with us right after. And then when it came to sign the contract, asking for insurances, the like, they just went silent. And so. I guess not surprising.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Back to you, Paul, twenty-five.
Resolve that the board of trustees hereby accepts the regis- the resignation of Laura Moore as as Coalition Coordinator of Pleasantville Strong effective January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Twenty-six.
Resolve that the board of trustees hereby approves the appointment of Philomena Valente to Coalition Coordinator of Pleasantville Strong at an hourly rate of thirty-three dollars retroactive to January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. David, twenty-seven.
Resolve the board of trustees hereby approves the appointment of Laura Moore to consultant for Pleasantville Strong at the hourly rate of thirty-five dollars retroactive to January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so those three taken together, uh, reflect decisions by the Pleasantville Strong Steering Committee. Uh, Laura Moore, who's been the coordinator, uh, steps back and now arrives in a consultant role. Philomena, uh, steps forward in the coordinator role. And just to remind folks, this is a, a federally funded grant program. The village is the fiscal agent, but, uh, the monies come from federal grants, not from the tax. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, you already, just, we already.
Oh, yeah, we did.
Okay, twenty-eight, back to you, Paul.
Resolve that the board of trustees had reviewed the account of unpaid taxes for fiscal year and in two thousand twenty-three as presented by the village treasurer, to certify that this account and the tax toll have been compared and found to be correct in the total amount of taxes unpaid.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. That's the last of our regular, uh, agenda items. Is there any comment from any member of the public on any subject? I see none. Um, any comment? New business from the board? All right, uh, let me just close with, uh, one final note. First off, thanks to all who participated in this, uh, longer than average, uh, meeting. Um, and we look forward to engagement as we work through the next six months during this moratorium to consider, uh, uh, the analysis that, uh, we'll undertake with the F J planning and then, uh, with the community at large. Um, the last thing I want to say is that on Friday, uh, a number of us participated in, uh, a bittersweet ceremony, uh, the walkout, uh, ceremony for Sergeant Thomas Woods, who's been, uh, a valued member of the Pleasantville Police Department, rising to the rank of sergeant, had been with us for eleven years, uh, previous service in the military. Uh, Sergeant Woods retired. Friday was his last day on the job. And, uh, he departed the police door on, on, uh, Bedford Road, crossed the street and, uh, was, uh, received by his entire collection of colleagues and, uh, many of us in the village, as well as friends, family, uh, and, uh, our county legislator, Margaret Quenzio. So congratulations, Thomas Woods, uh, on your retirement. We are sorry to lose you. We view you as a, uh, permanent member of our family. We expect to see you with regularity. Anything else?
That'll do it.
Is there a motion to adjourn? So, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Uh, thank you all. Uh, our next regular meeting is the second Monday in February, which is February thirteenth, for work session at seven P M., regular meeting at eight. Thank you all and good night.